All right, everybody, welcome to tonight's meeting of the Penfield Planning Board for July 12th, 2018. Allison, would you please call the roll?
Hetzke.
Here.
Bastian.
Here.
Knauer.
Here.
Tities.
Here.
Burton.
Here.
Nurseinger.
Here.
Sangster.
Here.
O'Connor.
Here.
Weisar.
Here.
Alrighty, we have minutes from our work session on June 14th. Hopefully, everyone's had an opportunity to review them and scrutinize them for mix-ups. If not... And table motion to move to approve by Bastian.
Second.
Second by Burton.
Hetzke.
Aye.
Bastian.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Knauer.
Aye.
Tities.
Aye.
Alright, Zach, you want to go through tables and missed landings before public hearing?
I'd love to. Table applications, real quick, no updates, no actions required by the board, so we'll move on to the action items. We have one action item that's continued from our previous meetings for the proposed renovations, building facade updates at McDonald's 1850 Empire Boulevard in Baytown Plaza. I'm gonna pause.
Okay.
I'm gonna pause. Jim, I told myself before to...
So, the record will show that member Burton has recused himself from this application and any discussion thereof.
And I'm back, okay. So, we have received two alternate updates to the previous designs that the board has seen. On the left, and apologize for the transparency issues with the projector and the computer, but you do have handouts in front of you as well tonight that were provided by the applicant. On the left is a version of the building that includes three new elements. You have the corrugated metal that wraps around three sides of the building, for the most part, a two-tone paint scheme on the existing brick, as well as a new lettering sign for McDonald's on the front of the building. Now, that's not for this board to approve or deny, that is part of a signage package that would eventually have to be reviewed by the zoning board, but it's been offered on this to help break up the ephesus and the ephesus surface that would be installed there. Similar on the right is alternate number two, where instead of the corrugated metal wrapping around the building, there's now a cornice feature that wraps above the ephesus. Same two-tone paint scheme, same lettering location for the sign. The major difference between the two drawings, as you see, is the corrugated metal versus the cornice. I'll open it up to the board for thoughts and opinions on that, and if there's how you feel about those changes, if there's anything else you want to discuss or see on it. Discussion's yours.
Okay. Thoughts?
I actually like the look of the cornice at the top versus the corrugation.
Okay.
And I did have a question, Zach, you don't like the horizontal strife that's on the front elevations versus the drive-through, I guess, elevation. Do we know what that material is?
What you see is like white and gray.
That white?
White and gray, is that actually the same material?
Yes, I believe so. Just that metal awning that would come out from the building.
Oh, okay, so that's a...
It's similar to the one we saw at 440-250, 441-250. It's just that awning that comes off and is anchored to the building there.
So, it's just that the color's just not captured the same on the two elevations?
Yes.
Looks on the elevation drawing that they're different widths.
Can you clarify?
Randy?
Randy's in the audience tonight?
Yeah, so the, it's intentionally two different colors, the front elevation and then where it wraps around to the entry is a white fascia on that canopy, and then the rest of the building is a gray silver metal. Now, that along, like on that bottom elevation, that's just a panel that's flush to the building, and what that does is covers up the transition from that brick to the ephesus. Where the white are actually projecting panels, I'm sorry?
It's like a, just a metal...
Panel strip, yeah. More or less, yes. Yeah, it covers that transition where they cut off and they insert and they go from the brick to the ephesus, and then the white that you see is actually a canopy that's projecting out from the building.
Okay.
It's sort of their branding that it's two different colors. And I would just add, I did ask McDonald's about what we submitted that showed that cornice being, matching the same color as the painted wainscot, but they're receptive to having that white, which is consistent with the rest of the plaza, if the board thought that was better. So, I mean, they're open to that, because I did sort of double-check in the rest of the plaza, all the cornice is white. So, it doesn't, whatever the board would prefer, I'm just throwing that out there, that it doesn't have to be tan, it could be white if the board preferred that.
Yeah, I think that struck me as being an element that was more like the rest of the plaza. So, I guess, in my opinion, if that was the same color as the plaza, that'd be great.
Other thoughts?
The canopy, is it, you talking this, can I?
Sure.
This can, this is all canopy through here and it wraps around?
That's correct.
And here it's a canopy?
Yes, so what that is, it's over the doors to provide protection from the rain, and then it's over the windows to provide some blockage of the sun.
Is there any lighting or anything in the canopy?
There is, up, it's up underneath, so it shines down.
So, you won't see it from the edge, you would just see it shining?
That's correct. It's a, like a half-moon sconce, half surface sconce that gets mounted to the building and shines down.
So, it's mounted on the buildings in the canopy?
I, yes, I believe so.
Randy, any of the other McDonald's similar to this setup that we could look at?
With the two-tone?
Yeah. That you're aware of?
None come to mind. I mean, a existing store has the two-tone, obviously, but not in this, not in this sort of paint scheme, if you will. We haven't, they haven't really done that.
You think that this is gonna match the plaza?
Well, so the color, this is the same color.
Color-wise?
This is their standard color of the main building color. In regards to the color of the, I think I just lost it. Oh, there it is. So, the color that we projected on the rendering is this color here, but again, there's, this isn't a standard, if you will, for McDonald's, so, I mean, we could vary this color if you wanted a little more tan or...
So, that color was picked because the same as the rest of the plaza, or?
No, I don't, I don't, I mean, there's various colors, like in that, what I refer to as the street of shops in the plaza, that, those new buildings, I mean, there's various colors in there. I mean, I think what I'm, I guess what I'm suggesting is not overcomplicated, but there's some flexibility in what that color could be. I think the idea from the last hearing was that we don't want to make the building too dark, we're actually trying to lighten the building up a little bit. So, that's sort of why we chose a beige color. And I think if it goes, you know, I sort of like, you know, I prefer something like this personally, but I don't know that it goes with the stone as well as the beige, because there's probably more darker beige-y colors in the stone than there is tan, if you will.
And any input from the plaza people there, the owners, have you talked to them on?
I did, I did have discussion with Paul Flucci. Not, I would say not recently, but he's aware that we're doing this, and he had made some suggestions to us about the cornice and some other things.
Okay.
Yeah, so they're aware, he's aware of it.
What types of suggestions?
Well, I mean, his biggest thing, I mean, what, he was sort of, and this goes back maybe even before we got to the board, about what he, based on his experience, what it thought it would take to, you know, for this board to accept this, and part of that was, you know, the stone, and part of that was the cornice, so he was just trying to lead us down that path, and I was trying to lead McDonald's down that path, and at first, they were a little hesitant, but they sort of warmed up to the idea. Obviously, we've submitted this and they're open to either option, so...
So, on the rear elevation, the mechanical, the corrugated metal screens?
Yeah, so that screen is replacing the, currently, I think there's like a vertical wood screen there, so that's replacing that screen. And I have that, like, that is, this feature is here.
Oh, okay, and it's horizontal?
Yeah, it lays horizontal, correct.
So, this rendering, you think it matches better for Baytown compared to your other store? 250, 441?
Having the cornice on it, absolutely. I mean, to be very frank, McDonald's would prefer the corrugated panel, only because that's sort of consistent with their prototype remodel design, but they also said if the board is more favorable to the cornice, they're willing to do that. And it certainly fits in with the plaza more consistently, the cornice, because every building, but we have a building now in the plaza that has cornice on it.
The, I don't even know what to call it, but the knee wall, or the, what you call it? Like the wainscot part? The part below the soldier course?
Yep.
I mean, to me, it seems like the rest of the plaza has upgraded quite a bit with some element that's attached to those areas, columns and buildings and everything, and with this being so prominent, to me, it would just seem, to finish it off, a lot nicer to add that element there. To add, what do you think? Well, add more of a, instead of just painting the brick, add like a limestoney look, or, like, you see the bases there of the columns and stuff?
Mm-hmm, yep.
And there, back at Flucci's room? You talking there?
Go to the left, yeah, like that, there.
Your other left?
So, you see that there's like stone there, and then at the bottom of the stone?
Yep.
You know, that kind of?
It looks like limestone to me.
I mean, that gives...
Yeah, so, I don't know if that's a limestone block or veneer, but, I mean, we did look at that. The concern, I mean, there's a couple of concerns associated with that is, one, the cost that it adds to the project, because there is a limit to what we can do to this building, that's just a fact. The second is some of the difficulty of adding that. It actually brought this picture, I didn't take this picture on purpose, but it just happened to be in part of the ADA survey. What it shows is that soldier course level. It just happened to have a tape measure on it, because I think they were measuring the height to the fire department connection, but that's 39 inches to the top of that soldier course at the fire department connection. And of course, the red, current red wainscot, if you will, is down at about 32 inches. This soldier course sticks out about a half to five-eighths of an inch, so when we look at adding...
Both the red and the white?
No, just this, the white soldier course sticks out.
So, that sticks out, so if you're looking at a profile of the building, here's the ground, it's gonna go up, out, and that, like that?
I would say, yes, yeah.
Or is it?
Yeah, the soldier course is projected.
Projects.
No, it's like the first one you drew.
Okay.
So, the difficulty we found with that is, you know, so if you put a, some kind of block veneer on this, and, you know, if you try to finish it here, then you've got this soldier course, to us, looked kind of awkward. If you carry that up higher, it's almost too high, but, you know, the other issue is how do you, how do you finish that cap piece, you know, having all these slots, whether they be horizontal, horizontal or vertical? So, it's just a very challenging architectural detail finished treatment compared to, and again, I can't speak necessarily to what those, well, those were new buildings, but the buildings that were there, I can't speak to what they were constructed of and, you know, how it compares to the challenges of adding it to this.
AJ, are you talking about wrapping the whole building, or just the Pennsylvania lightstone columns, like they did here?
He's talking about brand walls.
Oh.
So, those brand...
No, I'm talking the whole, the whole...
The whole building?
Yeah.
Okay.
At least the front and the sides. I guess if you're doing that, you might as well do the rear too, just so that it's all consistent. It just, to me, it, the plaza's gone through a lot of change to improve, and, yeah, you know, this is an improvement over what's there now. At least it's a, it's fresh and, you know, call it modern or whatever. You know, I just think that that would just kind of complete it.
Improve it.
And let it tie in to the rest of the plaza better.
Go back to the street shops there. If you go to the right, there, that's what you're talking about, AJ?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
I like that.
You look at that awning, that's gonna be similar to what the McDonald's awning is like.
Yeah. Yeah, that's very...
So, it would tie, tie in nicely.
You know, if this was a rebuild, I think McDonald's would be receptive to doing that, because of the, you know, the cost in relation to the entire project is much smaller. But to do that on this building, and given the current sales of this store, it's a challenge for McDonald's to get that. And I would just remind people that this is not corporate paying for this, this is, the corporate pays a share of this, but this is local owner-operator Mary Ellen Guon paying for this project. So, we're trying to balance that, and, you know, it does need to be upgraded, there's no doubt about that, and everybody, I think even Mary Ellen would agree to that. So, we're trying to find, you know, the balance of, you know, making the project viable, but yet making a nice improvement for the town.
What's the material that's above the two windows on the drive-through elevation? I know it, it's kind of hard to tell what the texture looks like.
That's ephesus, you know, and I was sort of, and I'm not an architect, but architects drew this, but I was sort of questioning, essentially, that's ephesus painted a different color above the window, and I was sort of questioning why that wouldn't be the darker color.
Okay, I didn't know what that material...
Yeah, it's ephus, everything above that, everything at the top of the brick up is ephus. Because the mansard, that's where the existing mansard is.
Yeah.
So, they're cutting that off. It just looks a little peculiar to me that it's, you know, you got this box that's painted a different color, but...
Does it stick out?
No.
It's flush with the rest of the ephus?
Yeah.
So, it's just like a header feature or whatever?
Randy, what about the Webster one, what's that, I'm trying to think, was it, I went by the Webster one, I can't... Is it what you're proposing? The Webster, the new building?
The one that was built a couple of years ago? I mean, that's entirely different.
Yeah.
Because that's a brick, a brick building.
That was nice. I mean, they tore the old one down, right?
Yeah. And that's, I know, I know, you know, I hear it a lot of times, and I know some, I've heard some of you people say before you travel, and the difference is, some of those stores are knocked down and rebuilt, and they certainly have more flexibility, and they have different features than some of these remodels.
Yeah. What's everybody feel on the, I mean, kind of? Yeah, I appreciate the cost considerations. I think that the plaza's overall getting back into the swing of things, and, you know, making this change will be a very beneficial event for McDonald's. You know, so the, personally, I think that the investment would be recovered.
Yeah, I think they've made some strides in the right direction, tying into the plaza. I think the limestone would finish that. I like the limestone.
Terry?
Be nice, I mean, there's no doubt in my mind, it would be a lot better. I mean, you know, it would fit in there a lot better. I know they're trying to get by with what they have, you know.
Yeah. You know, I know there's some budget constraints, but, and I don't know enough about the materials, but even if there was just a veneer that could be put over that surface, you've already got some revealed by that soldier course, so, but I don't know enough about the materials if a veneer could go underneath there, but that would be nice.
If I could just, one last thing, and I mean, the other concern with that is, you know, I talk about that joint that we left at the top, and yes, there is ways to cap that, but ultimately, we've got to be able to seal that, so we don't get water behind that, and we're not popping stuff off of that. So, we want to make sure we're not creating a, you know, a long-term maintenance issue with that.
Sure.
Okay, how would we, if we want, how would we approach this? Would we ask for another rendering, or could we, if we all feel that we want the...
Based on the conversation, I would say you could ask for a final update to the rendering, but also some additional information as to how and what, feasibility, is it, thank you, Pete, how and why it could or could not be applied. Folks, do you mind keeping it down? How and why the feasibility of this could be accomplished on the building? If the limestone veneer, the limestone texture could be added, how so, if not statewide? You know, and just a little more information about it, sounds like we, you need that information before you make a decision, so that everyone has the facts in front of them, is what I'm hearing.
That's an approach. If we, let's say we approved it with a limestone fascia, and then it's, okay, they walk away with, well, okay, we can go ahead if we do this, versus another round of...
Would you want to see the rendering first? I would want to see the rendering.
I think we would need to have it captured on a rendering, so I can reference an updated, a date on a drawing, and then have the materials...
Okay, fine.
Well, the other thing I would add...
Appreciate trying to save a trip.
While you're at it, too, I would...
Trying to keep this expedient.
While you're at it, I would also ask that the colors be identified on call-outs on this, so we can clear up like the white and the gray treatments here, just to avoid any confusion at what sounds like to be the final discussion of this at the next meeting.
Okay.
Did it work?
That works for me. You guys good with that?
I'm good with that.
Okay, so no votes required, this is a, just an action item only. Randy, you got direction that you need?
Yeah, can I just start by one thing on the corners? Is the board's preference to have that white, or is it the color of, well, I guess... I guess maybe that's a relevant at this point.
No, I think it's a fair question.
I think it's a legitimate question.
Yeah.
So, Doug's got it on this one.
Is that white, or is it...
Can you pan over to the other way?
So, they have different colors.
It's white. You got the sun you're playing with, but for the most part, it's white.
I'd probably say match the, match the rest of the plaza.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that...
Welcome back.
I'm gonna get Sinek to head up to the front. We recess for about three minutes, and here we convene.
Everyone, and welcome to the July 12th, 2018 meeting of the Penfield Planning Board. We'll begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate, free, and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everyone, for coming. We have three items on our agenda this evening. If you're unfamiliar with the process, I'll quickly go through it. First off, the applicant will present their project to the board. Once that is complete, the board members ask questions of the applicant, and then we open it up to the audience, and we are seeking public input on all of these matters. After that, we may have additional questions, the applicant may have a final statement or not, and then we'll close that portion of the hearing and move on to the next one. With that, I guess a couple of other things. Please silence all cell phones and pagers and those types of devices, so that you're not bothering each other. And if you come up to speak, we'll ask you to come up to the podium, please state your name and address for the record, and address your comments of the board, and not to the applicant. All right, with that, Zach, please go ahead and read the first application.
Before I do that, I have a form here for a Joe Smith. Is he in the audience? Okay, good, you were in the wrong place if you're here.
So, Joe, go to wherever you're supposed to be.
Yeah.
Which is, I guess, not here.
Historic Preservation Board Meeting.
Okay.
All right. Application number one, BME Associates, 10 Lift Bridge Lane East, Fairport, New York 14450, on behalf of Home Leasing LLC, request under Chapter 250, Articles 11-11.2 and 12-12.2 of the Code of the Town of Penfield, preliminary, final subdivision and site plan approval to allow for a mixed-use development project with associated site improvements on a 10.5-acre property located at 1821 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, and portions of 1835 and 1787 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road. The properties are now formerly owned by William and Debbie Wickham, and the Young Men Christian, Young Men's Christian Association of Greater Rochester, and Zoned MUD. Application number 18P-0022, SBL numbers 125.01-1-25.3, 125.01-1-34.13, 125.01-1-3.111. All yours, Nelson.
Thanks, Zach. Good evening, I'm Nelson Leanhouse with Home Leasing. I live at 62 Woodbury Place in Rochester, New York. We have an option to purchase... We have an option to purchase the eight acres or so from the Wickham family that's across the street from the YMCA. And our plan is to build a senior living community where seniors can age and place. We recently selected the name, Penfield Place. We think there's a great demand for this type of facility, and we're very enthusiastic about the opportunity. And we're very proud to partnership with Episcopal Senior Living Communities that will, will do the assisted living and memory care, while our company will build the independent living. Home Leasing is a young company, we've been in existence 51 years, while Episcopal Senior Living is a 150-year-old company, so we're very proud of that relationship. We have 12, Home Leasing has 12 senior living communities, so this business is not new to us, but the opportunity to, uh, partner with Episcopal Senior Living is new and exciting. We've been working for a long time with the YMCA, and, uh, where our, hopefully our infrastructure will be integrated to some extent. And during the past year, we've met many times with individuals, um, in the sit, in the town of Penfield, and they've been very helpful. Um, and without further ado, Drew, I'd like to introduce the President of Episcopal Senior Living, Lauren Ranaleta.
Good evening, Lauren Ranaleta. Do I need to spell that? Okay. Um, Episcopal Senior Life, um, I live at 30 Glendower Circle in the town of Pittsford. Um, I've mentioned once before, when I was with this group, that I grew up in Penfield, and continue to be a 35-year member at Penfield Country Club, and so this site is near and dear to me for its proximity to the club. Uh, in terms of Episcopal Senior Life, um, Nelson hit it on the head, we are celebrating our 150th anniversary this year. We were founded on Mount Hope Avenue as a faith-based, not-for-profit community. Uh, when I went there 34 years ago, we were a one-site nursing home, and, um, care and service was what we stood for. Uh, in the last 15 years, we have expanded to six sites. Uh, we have a seventh site in Livingston County under contract. This project will be our eighth site. And our whole principle is to go into a community, look at the population, look at the services that are offered, and then try to blend a program that helps people to age safely in, in, in an engaged lifestyle. So, what we've done in each of our communities is look at who the people are, what the dynamics of the neighborhood are, what the economics of the town are, and what the discretionary income is of people. And we just think this is a home run, and, you know, I think I may have said this once before, we think this is a pace-setting senior living project, blending a healthy lifestyle, crossing over to the Y, and all the dynamics that happen with the neighborhood in general, and then moving through a whole series of senior services that we would offer all the way up to our nursing home on Mount Hope, that's a five-star nursing home. So, I'm pleased to be here and look forward to the questions.
Hello, my name's Don Nebsker, um, I've been urban planner with SWBR, and I live at 4 Red Fox Run in Pittsford. And, uh, you know, we're very excited to be here as kind of the design team, along with, uh, BME engineers and SWBR. I think when this project was originally brought to us, and it was spoken about in terms of, uh, a brand-new zoning district in the town of Penfield, um, we got pretty excited about that, because, um, you know, I think it's an innovative approach to planning, it's, uh, we, we love mixed use and density and walkability, and we also love the idea of density and building compact, um, to save on infrastructure and protect valuable farmlands and such. So, you know, we got into your, your new code, um, and the design guidelines, and got even more excited about it. Um, I've got a couple of graphics up here that, um, basically where we went with this was to figure out how this project, the program of the senior community, would fit contextually into your plan, so that we weren't just implementing our plan, but we're also implementing your plan. So, the graphic on the right o, over here shows the, uh, Zone A within your mixed-use district, and clearly, our site falls smack dab in the middle of that highest-density part of your mixed-use district. You know, we read through the guidelines, and we recognized a lot of, uh, characteristics that we wanted to incorporate into this, um, that are typical of, of kind of these new urbanist developments, including the, the mix of uses, the, the vertical mixing, uh, the walkability, alternative transportation modes, creating a, a grid, both a vehicular and a pedestrian grid, to make it easier to walk around. And, you know, treating the public realm very special. So these, what's a hallmark of these communities is that the, the streets themselves are part of the public realm, they have safe sidewalks, uh, shade trees, on-street parking, uh, first-floor uses that spill out into those streets. And so, we, we looked to some of the inspirational images that were in your design guidelines, and we, you know, started picking through these, you know, the, the mix of uses, the awnings, uh, on-street parking that has a tree lawn of, of shade, larger shade trees that separates it, um, from the sidewalks. The vertical mixing of uses, first-floor commercial and, and residential above, um, a mix of architectural style. So these are, while our project isn't gonna look like any one of these inspirational images from your design guidelines, um, we've pulled what we think are some of the best, most appropriate pieces of that, um, into our site plan. So, with that just introduction, I'm gonna turn it over to Peter Vars, he'll talk through the site plan with you, and then, um, Joe Gibbons will come up and talk more to the architecture of this.
All right. Uh, good evening, Peter Vars from BME Associates, uh, at our offices, uh, 10 Lift Bridge Lane East in Fairport, New York. Um, so we are here this evening to present to you, uh, the site plan. Uh, we'll, we'll walk you through, uh, the nuts and bolts of the site plan app, um, application, 'cause we are here this evening to request final subdivision and site plan approval for the Penfield Square Development. As has been stated to you, it's a proposed mixed-use development planned for 10 and a half acres, uh, located at 1821 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, which we all know is the form, or, I'm gonna even still call it the current, uh, Wickham Farms property. Property is located on the west side of New York State Route 250, immediately north of the east side YMCA property. And it's been pointed out, the property is Zoned MUD, Mixed-Use District, and it's located within Zone A of the district. The project area consists of 8.4 acres, which is the current Wickham Farms parcel, an additional .6 acres that is located along the north edge of the property, those are additional lands being conveyed by William Wickham, uh, to the project sponsor. Uh, and then also, one and a half acres located here, along the south side of the Wickham Farms property that is currently owned by the YMCA. Those lands encompass the current driveway or roadway that comes off Route 250, and that brings us to the total of 10 and a half acres that constitutes this application. The subdivision application of this proposal is to subdivide this combined 10 and a half acres into five proposed lots, plus lands for town road right-ofways. The site plan application before you this evening is for the mixed-use development consisting of residential, commercial, and public-community space, all within one compact development. The site plan's been prepared per the design criteria of the town's MUD, uh, Mixed-Use Development Manual, including, uh, the district requirements of the Zone A core mixed-use area, as identified in Table 6.1 of the design manual, and also the 10 Principles for Mixed-Use Development as listed in the Mixed-Use Site Plan Application, which is Appendix D, uh, in the design manual. Our application materials did include actually a written summary of how we see this proposed plan to meet the 10, uh, development principles. We also, as part of preparation of this final site plan, included the feedback we received from this board, uh, town consultants, and the PRC as a result of the sketch plan review process that was conducted, uh, through the first part of 2018, culminating with an appearance before this board on March 8th, uh, for a sketch plan hearing. Our application materials that we submitted for the final site plan application did include the requested written responses to the sketch plan, uh, review comments we received from the board, and also the PRC memo, uh, from March 1st of 2018. So since March, the applicant and the design team, we've met, uh, several times to prepare this final design. Uh, then the, the point being is to come up with a final site plan that meets the development goals of Home Leasing and Episcopal Senior Life, but also to be sure we're meeting the town's vision for the mixed-use district. So there have been several meetings, as, as Nelson pointed out, we've been meeting with the Y consistently, because even though they're not necessarily an applicant, we understand, you know, that they kind of, uh, create the southern anchor to this district, so they are a, a, a significant player in this. So we've been meeting with them consistently. We've been meeting with town staff and PRC to be sure that we're, um, kind of on the same page as it relates to the mixed-use district in the design manual, given an acknowledgement that this is somewhat new for all of us. And we've also been meeting with the town board on some issues also, which I'll, uh, get to in a, in a few moments. The result of all of this is, is we've brought forward a plan, uh, this evening for your consideration. The proposal, uh, the actual formal proposal is Home Leasing is proposing a three, four-story building located in the northeast corner of the property, along Route 250, that would contain 113 independent living unit apartments. This building would be owned and operated by Home Leasing. Episcopal Senior Life would develop a second building located here, that would be a one- and two-story building that would contain 70 units of assisted living and memory care units. We also have designated areas along the southern edge of the property, uh, for non-residential, commercial uses, and we've also provided almost up to two acres of community open space, uh, within the project area. The MUD zone allows, uh, for 20 units per acre. The, uh, proposed development is a total of 183 residential units, so that works out to about 18 units per acre. In addition, the core, or the Zone A of the district, uh, allows a maximum building height, uh, four stories or 55 feet. Uh, the Home Leasing Independent Living Building will be four-story, have a maximum height of four stories and 53 feet, and the Episcopal Senior Life Building will have a maximum height of two stories and 37 feet. And when I'm, uh, finished, Joe Gibbons from SWBR will walk you through all of the building architecture, and can get into a little bit more of that detail if necessary. So it's now to review the site plan with you. As we mentioned, there are five lots proposed. Lot one is this lot located in the northeast corner of the property, it's, it's the largest of the five lots, it's 4.7 acres in size, uh, it's located adjacent to Route 250 and north of the existing entrance road. This will contain the Home Leasing Independent Living Apartment Building. This building will have a footprint of approximately 30,285 square feet, and a total building square footage of 104,800 square feet. But also, in addition to Lot One, or in addition to containing the Home Leasing Building on Lot One, it will include a .75 acre community green space, uh, located basically in the cent, uh, the center of that lot. Parcel's roughly dimensions 160 foot wide east-west by 200 feet deep north-south. The public green will be encompassed by a complete street design concept, uh, to allow two-way traffic around this area, but also provide on-street parking, and it will be designed to provide a strong pedestrian connectivity between this public green space and the various uses around it, both on Lot One and the adjoining lots. Lot One will also include a strong, uh, the, what we call the pedestrian corridor through the property, a north-south pedestrian corridor. This will be a 20-foot-wide corridor to, but, as we've talked about it, it forms a pedestrian spine that will be the focal point of pedestrian movement through this property. Not only does it provide solid north-south movement, uh, through the property itself, and provide connectivity between the various buildings proposed on this property, but it provides access to the YMCA to the south, and future extension to the north, as, uh, development may proceed further north within this MUD zone. The second lot proposed, uh, is this lot here, uh, about 2.36 acres in size, it's in the center of the site, just west of Lot One. Uh, it's north of, of the existing roadway, and would be east of a proposed roadway to be constructed with the development. This will contain the Episcopal Senior Life Building. This building will basically have three components to it. The eastern portion of the building is a two-story building that will contain 40 assisted living units, and then the western wing of the building will be a single-story structure that will contain 30 memory care units. In addition to those residential units, the southeastern component will include, uh, non-residential space, or, uh, a space that would be, uh, open to the public, and would actually, uh, accent and, and work off of the pedestrian corridor that runs north-south through the property. In addition to the building and the, uh, commercial space, it will also include two memory gardens, uh, in support of the memory care operation or facility on the property, and it will also include about four-tenths of an acre of a parcel here for an, another resident open space garden area. The other, the next two lots we're gonna talk about are Lots Three and Lots Four. Uh, Lot Three is just under a half acre si, uh, in size, it's south of the assisted living, uh, building, and just north of the existing driveway. We see this lot, um, it, first of all, it is designated to be a non-residential use lot, kind of, think of it as a, a commercial out parcel, but, uh, it has a development footprint, or potential of up to 9,000 square feet, and does have the ability to be, uh, more than one story if, if desired. The footprint has been designed to allow for outdoor patio and dining space along the pedestrian corridor here, and we really see this lot and the building that goes on this lot, that's really is gonna form the anchor between the, uh, dedicated Road A at the south, and the pedestrian corridor, uh, moving north and south through the property. So we see this as a very important building, uh, that kind of links a few things together. Lot Four is located in the southeast corner of the property, it's just over a quarter acre in size, right at the entranceway to the project of the entrance drive and Route 250. This is designated as our second commercial development parcel, it can provide for a development footprint of up to 3,000 square feet, plus additional space for outdoor patio, uh, and public space. The last lot we have, which actually is one of the bigger changes from the sketch plan, is what we have designated as Lot Five, which is this area here, it's just under one acre in size, uh, it's located along proposed Road B. Uh, these would be lands that would be retained by Home Leasing, uh, for future development consideration. This was an area on the sketch plan that we had designated, uh, for the stormwater management area, uh, which I will explain in a few moments of what we did with that. But most importantly, what this has done is by providing a development potential along Road B, we've now really, we believe have met one of the key core concepts of the district, which is to create a complete street that would have development on both sides. That was one of the things we heard at sketch plan, was the concern of, are we gonna get a complete street that can move north, get up to Atlantic Avenue, or, versus a, a roadway that's kind of pushed off to the side? With what we've done here with the design and creating the development potential there, we believe we're, we're definitely on our way to, such that that vision can be carried, uh, north as development proceeds. So, uh, so as we talked about this, the, the summary total then is, is 183 total units, residential units, and, uh, which is at a density of 18 units per acre. One of the other things the code requires is a minimum 20% of non-residential space. Based on, uh, the square footages we've talked about, this project would require approximately 37,000 square feet of non-residential space, and we feel very confident that that can be achieved on this project. And we feel very confident that that can be achieved on this project between not only what we are doing in the assisted living building along the pedestrian corridor, but also what we can do on lots three and four and elsewhere on the site. The applicant has had some initial discussions with staff as what is the best way to identify those spaces, identify those users. And the approach the applicant desires or is proposing is that the site plan approval would establish that the minimum non-residential space to be provided would be 37,000 square feet. But as with any type of commercial development, without knowing the actual tenants, it is somewhat difficult at this time to design a building, design a space. So what our proposal is, is that through these spaces that have been identified for the non-residential space, is that the flexibility is given to the applicant that those would be designed specifically once tenants are known, once their demands are known for spaces, uses, and whatnot. And then the applicant for those buildings would then come back to, to the town of Pembfield, knowing that in essence and principle, the space has been approved, but we need to know, okay, what's it actually going to look like, what it's actually going to consist of, who the tenants are. Again, very similar to how we deal with commercial out parcels when we're dealing with commercial developments. You know, we identify the square footage and the general location, but understand that the actual design and configuration is somewhat tenant-driven. At the end of the day, we acknowledge the requirement of the code that we do have to provide a minimum of 37,000 square feet, and it is our intent to, during this process, to continue to work with staff as the best mechanism of identifying that. We have though, we do understand though, that there is a need or a need to understand though, how these commercial spaces will tie in with the proposed residential buildings. And the architects have prepared some concepts of what they envision these buildings to look like, how they would tie in with the residential buildings. And Joe Gibbons from SWBR will walk you through those concepts a little bit. So with regards to, so that wraps up our discussion on the non-residential space. With regards to the third component of the mixed, of the mixed-use development, that is community open space. We've talked about the residential component, we've talked about the non-residential component. The third component is community open space. The zoning requires that a 20% is provided, which on this property is just, it's around 1.9 acres. We are providing that, we're providing it through a mix of parcels through the site that'll be available for community use and open space use. Because one of the key things we heard coming out of sketch plan was, it's not green space, it is to be community space that's available. The anchor to our community open space plan is what we call Parcel A, which is this three-quarter acre parcel located in the center of the site. And it's located in the center of the site for a specific reason. It's because we do want that space to be the focal point of this development as one, whether they're visiting the YMCA, whether it's somebody from the public that's going elsewhere, or whether it's a resident or visitor to the Pembfield Square Development. The point is, this open space, this community space is the focal point of what they see when they first arrive on the property or make that turn into the project site. This, what we are referring to it as a public green, it is very, or home leasing is very intent that it's going to be an active space. It is going to be a space with programming, not only for the residents of Pembfield Square, but also for the public. There's been ideas of coordinations with the YMCA. The relationship that's developing between home leasing, Episcopal senior life, and YMCA is actually very exciting. They understand that there's a lot of cross, I'm going to use the term cross pollination between these uses. And there's been initial discussions of how this space can blend all of those users together, whether you're at the YMCA and they have a temporary use, whether it's a pop-up farm market, whether it's coordinating with Pembfield's Parks and Recreation Department on using the space for programs or events. So it is their intent. This space will be designed with landscape and amenities and pedestrian connectivity to encourage the fact that we want the residents, we want the public to be using this space, to be engaging this space. This mixed-use plan is a compact development achieving density and non-residential use on a small parcel. But yet the project only covers, the building coverage on this site is under 20%. It just uses 1.8 acres for building coverage out of the 10 acres. And also it provides a total green space of 40%, just 3.9 acres. So it is a very efficient design, it is a very compact design. A couple of other remaining site plan items we want to walk you through. This access to the site, we've referenced it a few times, but the main primary access is going to be the existing roadway that is there today that serves the YMCA property. This roadway, it is the intent of the applicant that that roadway could be dedicated to the town of Pembfield and become a public street. The roadway currently is 30 feet wide. It does have, it's lined on both sides with shade trees that are actually starting to frame that roadway, starting to create a canopy. We do know that it was constructed to town standards, but we understand the responsibility to verify that as part of any dedication process. But also more importantly, it does provide a signalized access to Route 250. Some of you may be aware that the design of that roadway, when it was designed and constructed by the YMCA, there was the vision that this eventually could provide access to properties north of the YMCA, west of Route 250. But it was also cited with the intent that ultimately a four-leg, a fourth leg could be added to this intersection to provide access to lands east of Route 250. And if you look at the zoning map within the mixed-use design manual, you'll see that it identifies that. Point of all this being is that there was an intent for this roadway to be used to serve the lands to the north, and that's what we've moved forward within this site plan design. We are meeting with the town board, it is one of the main reasons we are meeting with the town board, to discuss the dedication of the road. There are some questions they have asked us that we need to respond to about that, and we are continuing to work with them on that. As part of this being a dedicated road, there is also a second public street proposed here at the western end of the property that runs north-south. We have it labeled as Road B. It is the intent that that would be designed as a complete street. And when we say complete street, it not only provides vehicular circulation or vehicular travel, but it's also capable of providing pedestrian, excuse me, and bicycle travel, but also providing on-street parking, providing a tree lawn area with tree plantings. So that is what this design calls for. It's two-way travel, on-street parking on both sides of the road, a tree lawn area on the east side, and then a shared pedestrian bike way on the, to the east of this public road. This road's been designed to meet the town standards. We've been meeting with the town engineer and the DPW on this because this is a new concept for town staff too, as it relates to snow plowing of such a road, how you regulate the parking and all of that, and we're working with them on it. But it is the goal that this would meet a town standard for dedication. This road would terminate at the north end of the property with the intent that it could be allowed to continue to extend to the north and meet one of the visions or one of the goals of the mixed-use district, which is ultimately a connection to Atlantic Avenue. Besides the proposed two dedicated streets, as you can see on the site plan, we do provide access completely around the property. At the north end of the property, there is another complete street designed with, and what we mean by that, on-street parking, the shared bike pedestrian way. At this time, that road's proposed to remain private. That was kind of through some discussions with staff because it kind of doesn't tie back into another dedicated street. But it does also make provisions for the complete street design principle of allowing possible future development to the north that could utilize that, that street if possible. The roadway continues around, providing parking to support the independent living building, and then loops back into this roadway that we've already discussed that frames the public green space. In addition to the site access and the circulation patterns, one of the things too, to make you aware of, is a traffic study is currently being completed or, yes, completed for this project. That was one of the requests we received out of the PRC review at sketch plan review. We anticipate that to be completed in the first part of August. That would obviously be provided to the town and any other regulatory authority necessary for the review of that. So that will be provided to you. One of the other key issues on this property is parking, and that, we actually believe this project is unique in what it can, what it does for us for parking. Because of the proposed residential use of the independent living units, the assisted living units, and the memory care units, the 183 parking spaces really do not put a large demand on parking. And as Nelson and Lauren said in their introductions, we have the benefit of two entities that have a vast amount of experience of operating their facilities. As Nelson stated, you know, they have 12 similar projects. They know their parking demand. And as Lauren says, they, this will be their seventh or eighth one. They know their parking demands. We will provide this information to the PRC, but it, really what it breaks down to is typically apartments you hear two units or two spaces per unit. This case, it's two-thirds of a space per unit. So for 183 units, we really only need to provide parking for about 120 units. That will meet the needs of residents, staff, and visitors. The current site plan before you provides a total of 108 parking for 188 spaces. That's between on-street parking and the designated parking areas that you see. So as a result of the parking demand we've walked through on the residential, it leaves about 70 spaces left over to support the, for public use and to support the non-residential uses. The parking has been laid out to serve the residential buildings where necessary, but also to support and serve the non-residential spaces, but also this on-street parking we see being very important to support the public green space. In addition to the hard, the hard surface area of the roadways, our site plan packages did include that street lighting and pedestrian lighting, especially along this pedestrian corridor. It is intended to have an aggressive landscaping package on this. There will be street trees, which we've referenced a few times. There also will be, you should have in your package a foundation building planting plan, but also most importantly, is a planting plan for the public green area with the intent of those plantings to frame and accentuate this space as it relates to being a public With regard, so in addition to the vehicular traffic movements, we also have prepared this plan to have a strong pedestrian network, both north and southeast and west. We've talked about several times already, the pedestrian spine that goes through the center of the site. We see that as being a key component as it relates to encouraging pedestrian mobility, not only through the Pembfield Square property, but linking it with the YMCA to the south, but also allowing it to the extent to the north, so that not only are we providing vehicular traffic with Road B to move north, we're providing a designated way to move pedestrians north and south through the southwest quadrant of the MUD. There is also strong east-west pedestrian pass-through there, and also most importantly, it links up with the town sidewalk system on Route 250. This plan does show, currently the sidewalk obviously terminates at the, at the YMCA way, YMCA entrance drive. This roadway or sidewalk, excuse me, would be continued to the north. So in essence, there's three ways for people to move north and south through the district. We have the pedestrian spine, the shared pedestrian bike way along the dedicated street Road B, and then the continuation of the Route 250 sidewalk system. Couple of other things, drainage on this site. Currently, the site, if you're familiar, is graded and it drains and grades from east to west from Route 250 back to wetlands that are actually located offsite on the lands of the YMCA. Our plan that we've prepared and have submitted is, the intent is we will collect all of the post-development stormwater runoff. And actually what we're doing, and this was the big change coming from sketch plan, through some conversations and collaboration between home leasing and the YMCA, this stormwater now is actually going to get conveyed to the existing YMCA pond that's located basically down in this area. We've provided the information to show how that pond would need to be expanded to account for the additional runoff. But what it allowed us to do is, this area that was originally reserved for the stormwater management area on the sketch plan, we're able to bring it back, I'm going to say, online, and we think, again, have the potential to really frame Road B as a complete street with having uses on both sides, kind of what Don referenced with his comments of sharing the visions of what the town had within the design manual. We provided the engineer's report with our application that provides all of those calculations that are required by your town staff and the town engineer to review, to show our compliance with the appropriate local and state regulations for stormwater management. Sanitary sewer, the project will be served by sanitary sewer. The, the plan is, is to locate a proposed pump station down in the southwest corner that will pump the sanitary wastewater through the YMCA lands along Route 250, and then utilize an existing town easement to provide access to sewer that is located on the west, or, excuse me, the east side of Route 250. The important thing for this board to understand as it relates to the design of that pump station, the sanitary sewer, it has been designed that allows that sewer to extend to the north. It basically follows the goal and the plan of the sewer study that the town commissioned several years ago for the Atlantic Avenue Route 250 area. Project site, excuse me, will be served by public water. The Monroe County Water Authority has the remains along Route 250. We will connect into those, bring the water main on-site to serve the buildings. The project site does include a transmission main that is located along the north side of the property by the water authority. Why that's important to this board, that water main does have a 50-foot easement over it because it is the water authority's transmission main. So that somewhat restricts what we can do up at this northern part of the property. In other words, we've pretty much got these buildings as far north as we can to keep them a good distance off the easement, but off the water main itself. So that was one of the site planning constraints we had as a result of the presence of that water authority. For me to wrap up my comments, as it relates to SEAKER, the State Environmental Quality Review Act, property is located within an ag district. We provided an agricultural data statement, but because it is in the ag district, the scale of development therefore classifies this action as a Type 1 action under SEAKER. So we acknowledge the fact that the planning board would have to conduct a coordinated review. And so one of the things we would ask that you do this evening, which I believe you can do, was be to, if you could declare your intent to be lead agency for SEAKER so that the coordinated review process can get underway. We've received the PRC comments for this final site plan application. We've met with them twice already. It is our intent, we will provide the written responses to those for the board's consideration at the next meeting. And we've also received comments from other consultants. With that, I am now going to turn it over to Joe Gibbons from SWBR Architects, who will walk you through the building architecture. Thank you.
Thanks, Pete. I want to put the two renderings up ahead. Just the two renderings. Good evening. My name is Joe Gibbons with SWBR Architects, and our offices are located at 387 East Main Street, Rochester, New York. I wanted to start tonight by kind of describing to the board some of the revisions since we came in for the sketch plan, the last sketch plan to the project architecturally. As Peter mentioned, the independent living building has gone from 96 units to 113 units, increased by 17 units. The, the assisted living building, the revisions they had architecturally, it went from three stories to two stories. Created a pitched roof on that building, so it more relates to the memory care building it's associated to. Provided a different color palette to that building, using brick horizontal lap siding. Slightly resigned the memory care wing, we kind of made the memory care buildings slightly smaller, just based on, just a reduced program. And we provided some additional design for some of the out parcel buildings that you'll be able to see in some of the renderings. And I believe the board has the elevations for the, for the different buildings in front of you, so. of you, so. We'll pass on some additional information as well.
Yeah. Some of the stuff that you've seen here, just.
So as far as the, the architecture for the independent living building, some of the changes we've made to that are providing some more traditional elements to the building, some gable roofs for, for some of the, the bump-out patios for the apartments. Finding horizontal lap siding, more traditional elements of that. Providing some additional, more traditional detailing to the, to the balconies themselves. So the overall palette feels a little more traditional, but we're also trying to, also trying to stay in a contemporary vein as well with the projects, and we're providing some traditional elements to it. The assisted living building, again, providing a different color palette to that. It's providing some, some real, true fenestration in some glass areas at the first level of that building to really kind of make it feel part of the pedestrian spine that Peter talked about before. You can see, the memory care building is, again, one-story building, pitched roof, a little more traditional as you get farther west. The scale starts to become, go from larger to smaller as you go from east to west. And, and I think, we've provided a couple of renderings we've been working on for the project, which are behind me, which I think really, I want to talk a little bit about the vision and the spirit of the project, and I think the renderings try to capture some of that, and inside of that is the architecture for the project as well. So, the rendering to, to the left, really, I think, really kind of shows the, the energy and the excitement around the pedestrian spine. I think that's a very important element to this whole project. It's, it's the focal point of the buildings. It, it's attached directly to the, to the public square, and that's the area where really it's, a lot of the activity, the main activity of the project is going to happen. So, the, the assisted living building will have a bistro cafe that will be open to the public. The, the out parcel building will, will have hopefully some kind of a commercial retail space that will be actively engaged to the, to the pedestrian spine. But I think what we really want to talk about is the, is the creating seating areas and active spaces that, that relate to the architecture. You know, we envision canopy areas, seating areas, things like that, all kind of directly related to the pedestrian spine, and really activating that, that piece of it. The, the rendering to the, to the right was really kind of taken as you're kind of entering the project, looking across the public square, back towards the retail area to the left, the assisted living building, and then getting a sense of the, of the independent living building to the right. And how these are kind of on the public square and really working to activate the public square. So you can kind of see the architecture for the independent living building with the more traditional elements and the color palettes, and the assisted living building was using some red brick and some traditional lap siding for that building. So really, just trying to activate it and really make it interesting, but not have the buildings all look the same. We don't want that. We want them to appear different in the project. So the public square, again, we foresee many activities for the public square. We've been brainstorming these for a few months now. Don Nutzner's going to talk a little bit about that in a few minutes. But I think as far as the architectural design, what we're really trying to do is, is we're really, traditional elements we're putting in this, but we don't want to force any false history in this project. We want it to be, to feel like a brand-new project, a contemporary project with, with a nod and, in a homage to some of the traditional elements of, of Penfield. So really, it's, it's about creating a project that's really going to work for the town, be exciting for the town for the next 40, 50, 60 years. So, with that, I can certainly talk about anything in more detail the board would like to talk about, but I'd like to turn it over to Don to just talk about some of the brainstorming ideas for the public square.
Yeah, I guess just to kind of close out this part of the design, I'll focus a little bit more on the, the landscape and the site. I think there's, yeah, there are at least three major kind of public spaces that we're trying to create and animate and make part of the community in this. One is, is the public square. You know, I think you all have this, this diagram here. We've talked a lot about how this is the focal point and the identity of, of this development. But as you can see in this image, it, it looks more like a grassy lawn. So one of the discussions we had at the last meeting was how do we design that so it's as multipurpose as possible? So we kind of came up with this board.
Can you maybe have somebody put that on the, yeah, on the board so that, A, the cameras can look, and the audience can also see? Thanks.
So as we've gotten into this design a little bit, we've thought through different uses that might occur in this. The first one is just the public square, just kind of a passive space. We've designed it now, it does have some stormwater components to it. It's surrounded by larger shade trees that kind of define the edges of it. We're dealing, treating stormwater also along the edges of it. It's surrounded by on-street parking, which provides access to it. There's four ways, one, two, three, four, from each of the sides that will bring walkways into it. But once you get into it, it's, it's really going to be an open lawn area that's as flexible as possible. You know, one potential use is this food truck rodeo concept, very popular around. So what we have designed is if the food trucks were in these on-street parking spaces, we've created about a 14-foot-wide lawn area that would be adjacent to the tree lawn, so that the food trucks could be accessed from that public space. And then we've got these kind of formal rain garden, stormwater components that separate that space from the green that could be used for picnic tables, or tents, or active recreation as the food truck rodeo is going on. Another possible use is the farmer's market, rather than having that activity around the edge of the green, bring it right into the green. Tents and vendors could be set up, you know, internal to the space, you know, leaving the parking spaces for parking. Or another possibility is using it as a concert, a concert venue, putting up a tent stage or something more permanent as a, you know, a nice-sized space for, for music, or events, or activities to go on. So all of these, and there's many more, we thought about doing a grass volleyball and other things, but, you know, just really to show how we've designed the space to be as flexible as possible for programming by both, you know, the, the users, the residents of the space, but also by the town, as this would be a, a community asset. So that's the one primary active space, the pedestrian spine. Is the other, the other major active space that's been talked about, and as, as Joe mentioned out, this diagram here really shows the parts and pieces of that. The street with the on-street parking, a tree lawn with larger shade trees that create, you know, a very comfortable pedestrian space on the one side, and then on the other, the, the animated building. So there's the, the public green, the primary pedestrian spine. Then the other space that was another benefit of the stormwater agreement that the YMCA was kind enough to work out with our team was freeing up this space here on the corner where we see another public open space being created. And in the latest landscape plans that were submitted, that's shown now as a different kind of park than the square here. It's a, it's a public park, but it's kind of more contemplative, that it would be something that you would enter through a small transparent fence into an area that had some smaller seating areas, maybe a sculptural element. So a variety of different public civic spaces that would be accommodated in this plan.
Do you want to grab anything else? Or Nelson, or John, or Alex? How would you leave that?
I think we're done. So, yeah, I do believe we're done, but obviously, we have the whole team here to answer any questions about operations, architecture, site planning, whatever you need, so we'll defer to you.
Okay. Thank you. Nice presentation. Couple of questions. The, as you know, and I think everyone knows, that this is our first go-around, or first attempt in this mixed-use district, and we want to make sure that we get it right and provide a place that is sustainable for decades and decades to come. What other experience has your collective organizations had with mixed-use developments? And can you go into some of that? What types of communities are they in? What's been the experience with them? What types of commercial spaces are, are successful in those areas? You know, I think the commercial space, while it's not named, it's a, it's a concern, you
Sure.
What, what does work?
Sure. Well, first I'll talk a little bit about the experience. I'm Brett Garwood, sorry, I'm Chief Operating Officer for Home Leasing. I live at 300 Dale Road in, I guess that's Brighton, Penfield, both of them, kind of. So Home Leasing does have experience doing mixed-use development. What's most important to us is that when we're doing any development, but a mixed-use development, is that we're appropriate to the context that we're in. So I have some examples that are in a little bit different context, but it kind of shows our approach. You know, the first, the first is our Voters Block community, which is on West Main Street in Rochester, New York, as well as Frederick Douglass Apartments, which is really right across the street. That's a more urban context, a traditional Main Street that frankly had suffered for quite a long time with vacancy. It happens to be the location where Susan B. Anthony cast her first vote. And we worked with the community to develop a housing and retail development that really paid homage to Susan B. Anthony's, not memorial, but the.
Memory.
History. And a location that commemorated that with, not a statue, but a, an element. So we created a café that surrounded that and complemented it, as well as our housing, which kind of provided the kind of mass that was respectful to a Main Street concept. Across the street was a historic building, that's a more of a traditional rowhouse building with commercial on the first floor and residential above. And we renovated that to historic standards, but together, you have what's recreated a more vibrant street with new construction existing and retail all on the first floor. A more recent example, which is still in process, is what we've done on Charlotte Street, and what we've begun to do on the former Inner Loop in Rochester, which in some ways is similar to this, in that you're trying to create a mixed-use vibrant zone out of something that, in this case, was largely vacant land, but there had been a highway. So we've now started our third phase of properties that redid that street on Charlotte Street, which is really beautiful now, with rental housing, market-rate rental housing, for-sale housing, and mixed-income housing. And we've proposed and been selected for an additional phase, one block south, that will be a traditional first-floor commercial space, as well as housing above it. So we have experience doing this. We have property, other properties that have mixed-income components on East Main Street. For example, we have just completed a project where we have café on the first floor and housing above it, as well as other office space and service spaces available. In this context, it's hard to get a tenant before you have, you know, at least site plan approval, right? So it is, it's, you know, impossible for us to say, this is going to be this tenant with this use, and it's going to look exactly like this. But I think what we've tried to do with our architects is to show what we anticipate in terms of a general massing and design. We've talked a lot about potential uses. I think the most important thing is we want uses that really achieve the vision of the mixed-use development area, achieve uses that complement what Home Leasing and Episcopal is, is doing, but also achieve uses that complement all the activity that happens across the street at the YMCA, because that generates obviously a lot of potential. We anticipate that there'd be potential for food uses, medical or medical office uses, professional services. We don't anticipate that it's going to be a, you know, big-box retail type of service that would have a very high parking demand, because in lieu of a very substantial parking lot, which would be more of a traditional suburban-style development, we have a public green, right? And we really are invested in making sure that hap, that happens. So the uses that we're looking at are those that would be vibrant, but wouldn't be huge parking demand. So more intimate food settings, professional services, medical services, things like that. I hope that begins to answer your question. Yeah. I don't have leases yet, but we feel like it is a very highly marketable site because of what we're going to build, but also because of what already exists there, because of the success of the YMCA.
Uh huh. Okay.
May I just add to that?
Sure.
One of the things that we have done in each one of our sites is look at the neighborhood. Who are the people in the neighborhood? What do they need? And although I didn't give a lot of airtime to talking about that, sometimes the synergy of the people that live around the area help us to create things. Example, in the town of Grease, we're adjacent to a public park. So as we were developing that site, we were repositioning or repurposing a Catholic church and a Catholic school. We worked very hard with the town to use the grounds to preserve the history. And so we have four or five sites on that campus that are places for the public to visit. Now, this is not necessarily historic in and of itself, but I think when you start to bring some of the neighborhood onto the site, I think it helps to create another purpose. In Grease, we also run a very large community garden, which the neighborhood participates in, and then we run a stakeout program. Much as you would see at a bar and a restaurant, we have a steak night where the neighborhood can come in and take advantage of, of what's happening. And, you know, I don't exactly know how it will evolve, but Brett started to talk a little bit about what will the medical component be. We know that the Y is expanding their medical space. When we visited with the Y, they don't have physical therapy there. They have a therapy-type gym for athletic training. At one point, we leased space in our building to a therapy company to come into independent living to do some therapy. So I just, I think that's one of the elements we want to build a program around in conjunction with the Y. And then the other piece would be the medical piece. We have set up a medical office in two of our assisted livings. And what we have found is that if you can bring a trusted physician that understands the aging process, you can create a meaningful practice that's different from the hospital-based practices that surround us all over. So there's just other thoughts that we're trying to bring service components into the use of the building. And then the most obvious one, of course, would be a beauty shop. I mean, that would be, I think, something that you could drop a parent off, go exercise at the Y, pick them up, lots of possibilities. Thank you.
Lauren, while you're up there, I got one question, excuse me. What about pharmacy? Do you guys have on-site pharmacies?
We do not. Pharmacy is really tough in long-term care. Almost everything has gone to a commercial hub. Now, whether, whether our contractor would consider opening a small retail space, that's a question we can consider. But the only, the only nursing home that I am now aware that is run in an in-house pharmacy is St. Anne's. It's just incredible, the regulations in that business.
What's the name of the facility in Grease?
Beatrix Place. Our facility.
Yeah. Where is that?
It's at the corner of Denice Road in Armstrong, and it adjoins the Adelaide Park, Adelaide Town Park. And we have an agreement with the town that they can use our parking facilities, and we really have kind of a good arrangement with the town. That was a Catholic school and church that went on the market, I think it closed in 2006, and we developed that in 2013. That's a real, you know, when you look at a church and then it becomes a senior living and outreach center, it hits some magic numbers, and it's very affordable to that neighborhood.
And the age group on that facility? I mean...
I would say, well, if you know Mr. Selkey, who is a legend in the town of Grease, he just put his application in. We've been open now five years. And I was at a Grease event recently with him, and he said, "I'm coming to live there." Age, they start about 62 when they go to 95. So, it's a very broad range of community participation. Courtney, am I right?
Am I right?
Thank you.
Thanks, Lauren.
I'm just going to add one more thing to, AJ, you know, what type of uses, because it is something that we've gotten more into these outparcels a little bit, and as, as we've started thinking about the shape and design of these buildings. For example, this, this building here, you know, one idea is to stretch that out even a little bit more so that it can be, you know, at least the first floor be divided into smaller spaces. And this is a small footprint that could be even smaller. And I think, you know, one of the things I've seen in, in these startup kind of new urbanist developments is a lot of startup businesses or people that want real small spaces, that don't want a big capital rent payment. So, the ability to have this first floor divided into, you know, 1,200 or 1,500 or 2,000 square-foot spaces rather than a, you know, larger six or nine, you know, could be how this ends up rolling out so that you get some of those more boutique users in there. Think about Pockets Landing, I don't know if you've been to Pockets Landing and the success at the Redbird Market, and there's a Fairport Pharmacy and Skip's Meat that are all, those are all small, you know, probably 1,200 square-foot spaces that are filling that. And, you know, I would see, Brett, I don't know if you agree, but I could see more, you know, there's being multiple smaller tenants on the first floor rather than, you know, a big, you know, 6,000 square-foot restaurant. And then, maybe the second floors might become more of the professional offices and services, and those also might be, you know, smaller spaces. So, I think, you know, one of the things I'm assuming they'll be looking at is that kind of tenant mix, but it might be several smaller spaces rather than big user tenants.
Yeah, those types of uses that generate, you know, individual attention, I mean, like the meat market is kind of, if you think about a food service, it's, it's a perfect type of use for here, right?
Right.
It's small numbers of people coming in, doing business, leaving, not 200 people coming in to dine at 5:00, you know, and leaving. And then, professional offices on the second floor or in the first floor in some cases, where they're doing individualized attention, physical therapy.
Before you run, so, I'm sure you're aware that we have another mixed-use development being proposed in the town. And like AJ said, this is our first crack at really trying to get our arms around how projects have evolved that, you know, may or may not have been the intent of the committee that actually developed the town's mixed-use program. Is he catching me? Okay. So, you know, what we're looking at here, 37,000 square feet of non-residential space is, is a lot of space. And, and one of the concerns that we have is how do you, as a developer, sustain at a high absorption rate all of these different non-residential uses such that between this mixed-use development and, and the other one that, that might evolve and, and one or two more that might evolve, so that people driving down that Route 250 corridor aren't seeing a number of vacancies? You know, we, we as a community have a lot of strip plazas.
Sure.
We have a lot of small professional buildings and, and a fair number of very visible vacancies.
Right.
And, and it's a concern. It's a concern with, with some of the residents that, that come and, you know, speak at, at these hearings. So, you know, we're, we're interested in, obviously, we don't want to pin you down to exactly what you're going to do or how you're going to subdivide the space, but, you know, is there a Plan B?
Sure.
So, that as you start to develop these outparcels in particular, because they're the ones that are most visible to the community, you know, what kind of a plan, you know, might you have in place to ensure that, that there's a viable business in all of these areas and that we aren't stuck with these vacancies and these for-lease signs?
Sure.
In, in, in particular, kind of obscuring all the beautiful buildings that you have behind it.
No, that, it's an excellent question. It's frankly, it's something that we should all work to make sure we don't avoid. So, I appreciate the question. I'm going to do my best to answer it now, but I want us to go back and actually continue to give you even more information on that topic. I'll say a few things. One is the 37,000 square feet, and Peter will correct me if I'm wrong, is the 20%, the full 20% amount. One of the things that helps us is a substantial portion of that amount is absolutely integral to our two buildings, right? Lauren's building contains the dining facility, the bistro, and some other spaces that are totally linked with the provision of assisted living. So, that portion of space, although it's not the full 37,000, is a portion of the 37,000 that we don't have to worry about in the way that you're describing, right? An additional portion is integral to our building. So, that's, again, a portion of it we don't have to worry about. The 20% is the amount that the plan calls for, and the way to help protect us from vacancy is to not build it before we know a user. So, that's one thing. Now, users can change. So, we, that's why we want this flexibility to be able to fulfill whatever requirement we have for non-residential across a couple or maybe even three parcels, and to be able to have the flexibility to come to you as we have tenants. None of these buildings are going to be huge. These are not strip malls. So, if there is a vacancy, we're not looking for a huge amount of space all at once, because it is much more likely that is that 1,000 or 2,000 or even less than that space at a time. And I especially am warming to the idea that maybe this building is a smaller footprint but two stories because you have professional office on the, on the second floor, which, again, give you a not huge impact of a single tenant leaving, but also wouldn't have an impact visually, right, in terms of what you're talking about, the big for-lease sign that, that, that occurs. The other benefit that we have is we're next to the YMCA, right? And they are an incredible organization that drives a lot of activity. And the ability to pick up a to-go dinner or to get, you know, go to the dentist or the podiatrist or whatever medical office use is here and then go over to the Y, or to drop off somebody for a cup of coffee while you go to the Y, that generates a very stable amount of activity that I think will not only benefit our ability to lease, but also benefit that public green from being not just grass, but the public Penfield Square we hope it becomes. And, you know, I think we should go back and give you even more information, but that's my off-the-cuff. I don't know if anybody else has something to add.
This will sound like we're touting our own horn, but I think the key to keeping retail occupied is the management company that manages it. We have built medical office buildings. White Spuce Boulevard, for example, has medical offices, it has retail. It's been there 30 years. We managed it, it's stayed occupied. Right today, we have eight retail stores on East, on West Main Street. Small retail stores, very small businesses.
Like what, though? What do, what do they, sorry to interrupt, but what do they do?
Barber, florist, IT, mixed, just a real, real mix. Now, not to say there isn't turnover.
They're focused on that neighborhood, your development primarily?
Yep. They're all in the building that Brett mentioned. We have a person that works full-time on commercial management. I hate to say it, but the number-one reason they'll stay occupied is because of the company that operates the building. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody from the board have questions?
Yeah, I had to. I guess just two comments. The common public area, the original sketch showed a park pavilion. Is that still a possibility? I know when you talked about the different uses, it sounded like you were still kind of brainstorming that area.
I'm going to have a follow-up on that, too.
We haven't decided that we will, we will not do any sort of pavilion or, or any, any sort of structure. I think we want it to be as flexible as possible. I think we want to just continue that discussion. I think our focus has been on landscaping design and flexibility, but whether there's a, a small gazebo or something like that, we're kind of neither for or against it. I think it's a collaborative discussion.
Sure. Okay.
Can I just follow up on that?
Sure.
Quick. I think the stuff is called GeoGrid, but it's the, I guess it's plastic grating that you put underneath grass. You grow grass on top of it so that you could drive trucks and make parking lots and, and so on. Would you be open to that in that space? When you mentioned the food truck rodeo, when you mentioned the farmer's market, to me, I guess my idea of that GeoGrid is that it makes the, the surface a lot more stable and solid. So, with our climate, with, what do we have, nine, 10 months of snow? Or mud? You know, maybe that expands it to, you know, more time that we could have outdoor activities there.
I don't know what the GeoGrid stuff is, but I understand your concept. So, I think we should think about it. I don't know on cost and exactly how we'd use it. We should research it more.
Pete, you seem to be a pro of this GeoGrid stuff. Do you want to address that?
Yeah, we're, we're familiar with the GeoGrid prior. You know exactly what you're talking about. And I think, just as Brett said, that is something we can look into, but I would be honest with you, if we were going to commit to something like that, I think actually a hardscape is a better use, because typically what we see with GeoGrid is we really only use it where areas that you don't care what it's going to look like. And what I mean by that is, is because of, if you're going to drive on it and wear on it, and because of the, the medium you have to use to construct it, basically, it'll brown out really fast on you. This weather we've had for the last three weeks, those areas would be brown today, because it's not topsoil and organic base where it's green and lush even if you water it. So, I'd be concerned of...
You can't put irrigation in there or anything?
But, but the issue is, is because you've got to get a structural element to it, it doesn't have the other properties to retain moisture to allow the grass to flourish. So, you know, I'd just be concerned of what the appearance would be. But I think what's more important out of your comment, which, as, as Brett said, is we're still willing to have discussions of that use, is what we're seeing is, is there a way to extend the usability of that area? And I think that's the comment for us to take away from this.
Yeah, have it be green and...
Right.
Lush, but usable at the same time.
Right. Understood.
Yeah, I think one of the, I really liked the board that was prepared today regarding this, because I think you could probably have 16 squares on it, and I think the best...
Microphone.
Sorry, the best response to your question is for people to throw out ideas, which we'd love to hear, of how this space could be used and when that might be used, and then we can go, how would this need to be designed in order to accommodate it? So, if somebody wants to do some sort of event that would be in the winter or the summer or the spring or the fall, and we can understand what it is, given the infrastructure we have designed today, how would we lay it out? Or is there something we could do to make sure some event like that could happen? And I, I think we should start with the ideas so we can make the design accommodate as many as possible, you know, within reason. I mean, you can't accommodate rocket launches or something like that, right?
I guess it depends on the size of the rocket, but...
One more, just, yeah, I think that, that's a great, everything that's been said is right on, and, and we'd love to design this to accommodate the programs and variety. I agree with Peter that, I mean, I think there's lots of different ways we could structure the soil to accommodate what, what you're going to, what you're talking about. But also, I think, we, we just saw a presentation on Columbus Commons in Columbus, Ohio, and like all the ways that that's being programmed, and one of them is the Christmas tree. I mean, it's the big celebratory Christmas tree. So, like Brett said, we could probably come up with 16 or 20 of these, so please add to that list, and we'll try to make this thing accommodate as many of those ideas as possible.
Okay. You had some...
Yeah. One other question. No problem. For the folks that are living in the independent living building, what accommodations are for those folks that have electric vehicles, that is, those that have to be charged?
We have some electric charging stations at some of our other communities. I don't know that we've specifically said we're going to have one or two or zero or how many. We're open to the idea, in general, we tend to build very green. The way that the project is funded and the kind of company that we are, we adhere to at LEAST Enterprise Green Community Standards, NYSERDA Energy Star Standards, and Climate Action Bond Financing Standards, depending on the specifics. We've done LEED Gold Certified Buildings. We're not committing to that here, but...
Sure.
Generally, green is true, but we haven't located one or anything like that.
My thought is, yeah, if someone moved into that community and had a totally electric vehicle, there would have to be an accommodation for them to charge, or they basically couldn't live there.
Mm-hmm.
So, something you may want to consider as more electrics become more common.
Definitely will look at that.
Out of all the potential residential units, what do you anticipate as the percentage of people that are still working and not retired? Any idea? They're going to be going in and out every day?
I don't have statistics off the top of my head, but we can look at our other kind of comparable communities and understand that. It's certainly not an extremely low number or extremely high number is my suspicion, but let us see if we have some data on that. What we do know is our parking demand, and as part of our traffic study, based on tables and statistics of comparable types of communities, the trip counts and things like that would be available.
Mm-hmm.
be available. But I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay.
I would say 10 to 20 percent.
Yeah, so our guess, our guess is 10 to 20 percent at the moment. It's interesting, I was just reading an article about the number of 85-year-olds working is the highest it's ever been in history. So I think, in, over time, I suspect we'll have more people. It's not going to triple or double, but it seems to be a trend that people remain partially employed for a longer period of time.
Right. Okay.
Given that you're going to have 113 independent living units and 70 assisted living, what, I haven't heard anybody talk about any accommodations for public transportation. I would think with this type of clientele that that would be a, a need that's a little bit higher than most.
Just, that's, the, Route 250 is on a, is on a bus route by Genesee Transportation Council. Right now, they don't enter the site because it's a private road. Basically, once it becomes dedicated road, they would make the assessment of whether, you know, to enter the site. But the, the important component is, is the design of the dedicated portion of the street are ones that would accommodate bus traffic, would allow, if an RTC bus were to come in to circulate around. But that's actually a decision they make as to whether it's worth their while. The only thing we can answer to is, yes, it is on a bus route today, and that accommodations have been made in the site plan design that would facilitate the traffic if, if they choose to exercise that.
Okay.
Okay?
You know, as part of Lauren's program, and he can talk about details if you want, they do provide some transportation services. As part of our relationship anticipated in this project, there will be some transportation funding available to help serve our residents. And it's very common in our typical independent living communities, even if we're on a bus line, to accommodate for trip-based needed use. So, you know, on this day, the transportation available to the grocery store or to different other shopping experiences and things like that. So transportation services tends to be part of the services that are provided in our senior communities, but we love that we have access to public transit, too, obviously.
Okay. Thanks.
I just got a couple of questions. Obviously, we're all aware of the traffic situation down there on Route 250. And we're going to do a study. Hopefully, it'll be out in August, and hopefully, it's going to address some of those issues. I know if you touched on it, though, some of you may be aware of the signal light at their location. Took a long time to get that signal light, and the YMCA generates a lot of traffic already in and out of there. With that said, do you feel that down the road, even before the study's done, that that's going to be able to accommodate what you guys are proposing here?
Yeah, actually, I had a conversation with the traffic engineer today. There are a few things to acknowledge about this. Why we have a, a high level of confidence that the, the traffic improves, the highway improvements that are in place today are, to be adequate. Because when the updated traffic study was done for the YMCA in 2013, understand the level of improvements there. Road A, sorry, the YMCA driveway, actually was designed, again, as I talked about, that was designed anticipating a potential four-way intersection. So the YMCA drive, which will become the dedicated street, hopefully, has two exit lanes, okay? It does not have your standard one in, one out. So that was an acknowledgement to potential capacity or, or volumes to be added. There is two designated lanes to exit. In addition, 250 itself coming into the site has a designated left turn lane into the property. So those are the, the engineering designs and then the construction improvements that have been done with the signalization. But as we talk about the volumes itself, this is an interesting dynamic that I was able to talk to the traffic engineer about. Think about in 2013, when that study was updated, we had the YMCA use. We had it established. We knew what it was generating. We know what it's generating. We also had Wickham Farms. And we all are familiar with the traffic Wickham Farms can generate seasonally. Ironically, what we're finding is, and the 2013 study kind of looked at that, the seasonal peaks of Wickham Farms is higher than the projected trip generation from this development. Again, part of that being, even though, you know, AJ, we will look into this as the part of employment, is the fact is, is this is not a high-traffic generator, these uses, because of, of the residential component. Combine that with, because of, and this is one of the positives of mixed-use development, with the YMCA, whatever is the non-residential use and the residential uses, they all operate at different times of the day, which is a, which is good traffic management. You're getting all these uses in a place, but they're not all peaking at the same time. You're spreading out those peaks. While residents may tend to, they're going to be traveling in and out opposite of when people are coming to the Y. That's, you know, incorporates different times versus if there's professional office on the site, that's going to be peaking at different times opposite the Y. So the traffic study will address all of this, Terry, and it's, it's one of the things I discussed with them today. But that's some of the initial indications they're coming back with, is that the district, the different types of uses is spreading this traffic out, and that there's a high level of confidence of what theirs today is going to be adequate.
Now, Peter, if we approve this project, the development would all take place at the same time, the whole?
Well, I, I'll let Brett answer that, but it is, I'll, I'll just let him answer that.
I don't think, I don't want to make an exact promise, but I can tell you what our anticipation is. We hope to proceed with the two residential components at the same time or pretty close to the same time. We, we, our plan, even though they're separate projects and separately financed and owned separately, to do that all at once. Frankly, in some ways, we have to do substantial portion of all at once because you have to prepare the entire site, right? So that's anticipated. We would hope to be able to build the non-residential piece, begin building that shortly after we start the residential components, but it is dependent on our ability to find those tenants. And the question will be, do those tenants come when our project is done? Or do those tenant comes when they know the project's going to come, right? So the, the bulk of this should be built basically all at once, but the out parcels could lag, although our preference would be to build everything at, you know, pretty close to the same time.
And Road A would be the entrance and exit for the construction area?
I'm not going to answer that, but I think we're looking for alternatives.
Yeah, it is the desire not to use Road A as, as the construction access because of the presence of the YMCA and their membership and how active they are. So we are looking at alternatives of, of getting a separate construction access so that construction traffic is separated from the current users of the road that access the YMCA.
Okay. You kept mentioning Road B going north to Atlantic Avenue, possibly, in the future?
Well, i- if you look at the, the MUD manual and that overall map, that is the goal or the vision of the town, is that a dedicated street that comes off of the Route 250 intersectional line heads north and ultimately links up with Atlantic Avenue west of 250. The, the vision of the plan is not only to provide a, a vehicular means to allow that to occur, but also pedestrian. As, as Zach, you know, pointed out to us at the very first meeting, one of the goals is, they would envision somebody being able to be at the YMCA and bike, walk, cycle, whatever, rollerblade, and get to this building and the park system here. That's one of the visions. So what we have done with our plan is to kind of, we, we're creating the southern anchor of that. And then what happens as other parcels develop, we'll have to ensure that that vision continues to be met.
Okay. I didn't know if you, some insight into further-
No.
-stuff north. Okay. Okay, Peter. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other board comments at this time? Okay. I would like to open it up to the audience, and we have Kevin Gallagher. Come on up.
Before my prepared statements, I have a couple of comments. One has to do with the, the public square area. I believe a one-way traffic pattern would be better. It would be safer, and it would allow for more space for green space or parking. I have two main issues with the proposal. Three or four-story buildings would damage the protected aspects such as scenic views and vistas of the Wilm's Conservation Easement. Obstructive buildings, materials, lights, or other features will also adversely affect the protected views from Dublin, Dublin Hill and the surrounding area. Although the properties under review are not included within the physical confines of the Conservation Easement, they are bound by the Comprehensive Plan and Open Space Plan. The Town of Penfield officials were informed of these restrictions before the mixed-use plan was completed, but failed to properly address the issue. The mixed-use zoning does not override the Comprehensive Plan. Even the Comprehensive Plan, even if it was changed, the Conservation Easements as perpetual contracts hold precedent. So only a plan that preserves and respects the significance of the Wilm's Conservation Easement is acceptable or lawful. The mixed-used area has always resolved, revolved around the intersection of Routes 286 and 250. As far as I understand, the intersection is at or near capacity right now. As the backbones of the entire mixed-used area, it is vitally important to have a viable transportation plan. Even though this issue has been apparent for several years, a robust transportation plan has not been formulated. The, an alternate road configuration I, that I provide to the town is the only proposal that I'm aware of to change the configuration. Of considerable unease to me is the safety for the residents on the curved portion that is also a hill just south of Atlantic Avenue. It is my informed opinion, as a driver, runner, bicyclist, and long-term participant in traffic safety issues, that none of the projects in the mixed-use area can go forward before a road transportation plan is completed. I believe that would be a huge mistake. A road traffic plan must be the first aspect.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to comment on this application?
Kevin Fitzpatrick, I represent the YMCA Greater Rochester. I'm also a Penfield resident. So I just want to start by telling the board, great job with your questions. I think every question that you ask, we already have asked home leasing and Episcopal Life, but I think we have to learn from you, from our, our experience before, before year as to what we were, what we're looking at. So I'd, I'd hate to say that we're sad that Bill and Debbie are moving down the road, and when we sort of heard of that, we were a little leery as to who was going to move in next to us. It's always sad to lose good neighbors, but when we look at home leasing and Episcopal Life, we know we have great neighbors that are potentially moving in. When we looked at this plan from the Y, we considered the Y and the safety of our members. And as you look at the plan that they've put together, what attracted us to this, because again, it really needs to be a partnership as that road comes together and what the town wants to develop. When we saw it was memory care, assisted living, and senior housing, we realized that the traffic patterns were not going to be great. There could be much more intensive traffic. It was some other development as we went down. So that's really what appealed to us. And then as we looked together, we talked about partnering. So you talk about what can that green space use? We talked about, you know, yoga in the square that the YMCA can provide to the entire community. Tai Chi, other programs like this, we felt that it would just really complement what we're already doing and really drive the mixed-use development as we went down the, as we went down the, the road from there. So we're, we're very excited about the potential for Nelson and Lauren to, to work with the Y and figure out what we can develop on that property. I don't think anyone, and I've said this many times, anyone would really foresee 16 years ago, when the YMCA brought, bought the property, and it was a farmer's field, what it really has entailed, and really the development and the prosperity that is bringing to Penfield, that actually this area. So I just want to say the YMCA is fully supportive of this. We've asked lots of questions because we know our reputation, along with home leasing, the towns and Episcopal Life is really on the line as we go with this first mixed-use. And we want to make sure that, in our case, we got it right, and we think we've gotten it right. So I just want to lend our support to, to the project. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the audience? Yes.
At Linsco 40 Willow Pond Way and also part of Penfield Trails, the town is in the process of updating their Comprehensive and Master Plan. And in that process, we're trying to develop a master plan for trails throughout the town. So we want to make sure that the trails, that the town develops includes areas such as this. We, we don't have a trail yet from Harris Whalen Park up to Veterans Park, and that's one of our long-range goals, is to put something together. We've started coming north from Harris Whalen Park, but we, we don't have any place through the Y property yet or connecting with subdivisions in the area. Some of the subdivisions, of course, have no back access, so if you walk into a subdivision, you've got to walk back out the same way you came in. And also, an opportunity to provide some bicycle trails. Our, our signs on the entryways say, share the roads. Well, some of the roads are pretty busy, so off-road bicycle trails would be a, a big advantage to the town. We're currently developing a trail system from, along a Reniquay Creek from Parenton to Webster. We'd like to match the trail systems that Webster and Parenton are already in the process of doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else in the audience like to comment on this? Anybody else from the board have additional comments, questions? Any final statements? Are you all set? Thank you for a nice, comprehensive presentation. And I guess we can move on to the next, next item. Thanks.
Application number two, LaBella Associates, 300 State Street, Rochester, New York, 14614. On behalf of Rochester Gas &amp; Electric, requested, request under Chapter 250, Article 12-12.2 of the Code of the Town of Penfield, preliminary final site, site plan approval to allow for a building addition and parking expansion with associated site improvements on a 19.4 acre property located at 1270 Plank Road. Properties now are formerly owned by Rochester Gas &amp; Electric and zoned RA2. Application number 18P-0023, SPL number 095.03-1-33.
Hello. My name's Bob Steeler from LaBella Associates. I'm here representing RG&E. They're proposing to develop a new storage barn at their existing facility at 1270 Plank Road. The proposed storage barn is located at the northeast corner of their existing building. It's proposed to be 70 feet by 25 feet. Does not connect to the building, but there will be a doorway from the building to the storage garage. They'll have walls on three sides and open on the fourth side for storage of equipment to protect it from our winters and weather conditions. We're also proposing to add a new 12-space employee parking lot west of the existing facility. Right now, the employees kind of park all over the site wherever they can stay out of the way, and they're desiring to kind of keep it contained in one area. The project will involve about a half acre of disturbance, soil disturbance. The existing area where the proposed barn is going is currently paved and gravel areas. We're essentially going to replace the same pavement section and gravel section once the barn is in for foundations and grading to, you know, the same surface areas will be, will apply. West of the building where the parking lot is proposed is currently a grass area. West of the building where the parking lot is proposed is currently a grass area. We'll be adding about 5,000 square feet of pavement in this area. Drainage in that area is proposed to head west and then north towards an existing wetland. We received the PRC comments, I believe last week, and we're in the process of addressing those in writing, but the comments seem very minor in nature and easily, easy to be addressed. So we're here requesting preliminary and final approval for the projects, and I'll open it up to any questions from the board.
Okay. Thank you.
Just a couple of quick things, Bab. I was out there today, met Ryan. I don't know if they got ahold of you. Looked at the site, looks pretty good. So you've met with the engineers about the runoff, are you going to address those issues, right, in writing?
Yep.
Everything else seemed, it's going to be the same structure, similar to the one that's up there, correct?
Yeah, it'll have the same type of siding materials as the existing building.
Which looked like aluminum?
Yeah.
You know, right? And yeah, the property looks good. What about any more landscaping? You're going to leave everything the way it is landscaping-wise, correct?
Correct, yep.
Yeah, I mean, you guys did a pretty nice job there. The property actually is well-kept. I think that's it. I think I walked around with the guys, Dave Ryan Land, he's director of facilities, I guess, and I think Mark was the on-site manager. So I spent some time out there with them today, but thank you, Bab.
Do you have any lights proposed for the new parking lot or new building? And if so, what types?
There's two existing lights near the parking lot. They'll probably just be added fixtures and those kind of things to expand the light flow out to the west.
So you have an existing pole, you'll put another head on the other side?
Correct, yep. There is no additional lighting planned in here, but there may be some lights under the storage roof.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that whatever goes in that doesn't spill over into the neighbor's property.
Sure. Yeah, so we can provide a photometric plan.
That'd be good.
And if that's not favorable, we can install new lights that face towards the building.
Okay. Any other board questions? No. Anyone from the audience like to comment on this application? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Zach. Application number three.
Application number three, Marks Engineering, 42 Beaman Street, Canadago, New York. On behalf of William and Debbie Wickham, request under Chapter 250, Article 12-12.2 of the Code of the Town of Penfield for preliminary final site plan approval to allow for a farm market operation with associated site improvements at 1303 and 1315 Sweets Corners Road and 1689 Dublin Road. The properties are now are formerly owned by William and Debbie Wickham and zoned MUD, RA2, and RR1. Application number 18P-0024, SPL numbers 125.01-1-24, 125.01-1-22.1, and 125.01-1-21. All set.
Good evening. Bill Wickham, 1787 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, Penfield. And I'm here with my wife Debbie. And Brennan Marks, our engineer. I'll just start with a really quick history here. I know most of you have all heard it before, but Wickham Farms, we started in Penfield in 1986, and it's evolved from just, you know, you pick pumpkins with self-service to what it is today. We've got different facets of it. You know, we have vegetable division, fruit division, grain division, and family fun. You know, we considered to evolve, and now we're running two venues, two retail venues, one on Route 250 and one on Sweets Corners Road, which has become increasingly confusing to our customer base. No matter how much we communicate, there's still confusion about that. So we're excited about the opportunity to consolidate all of our operations to Sweets Corners Road. In terms of what we've done in preparation for this, we talked to staff throughout 2017 about our plans and helped to frame them with their guidance, especially given that the mixed-use development zoning was coming down the line. So we've done some work to make sure we're conforming to the 10 developmental principles. We've submitted that information. Feel really good about our project being a transition from probably what will be sometime in the future, some heavier mixed-use development to the west and transitioning to RA2, both to the east and south of our project. Will have a lot less impact on our surrounding neighbors than some of the other possible uses would have. In December of 2017, we discussed the ag uses with the town board relative to the Wilm's Conservation Easement. We'd done a lot of research on that and wanted to present that to the town board. At that point, they wanted a review with New York State Department of Ag and Markets, which they did, and the town attorney. And then in January, passed a resolution that we were in agreement with the proposed uses that we had for the parcel 1350, essentially that's encumbered by the Conservation Easement. Were indeed allowed under the easement. Spring of 2018, we began outreach to our neighbors. Anyone who received a postcard for notification for tonight's meeting or our last meeting, I asked the town staff to provide us contact info, and so we had outreach to them. We offered a couple of informational sessions, and we've had direct contact. We were pretty open communicators. So we've had direct contact with a number of neighbors, had some discussions. We've done some things to already address some concerns. We've installed a pretty significant berm on our southern property boundary. I think it was about 38-foot evergreens that we planted. We've revised our hayride route to keep that significantly further away. It's funny, we had a wonderful fall last year in terms of weather, which also, who has to worry about dust in October? And we did last year, which is a great problem to have, but it helped us identify, you know, hey, we need to think about that and move some of that traffic away, which we have. We've talked to neighbors that have the most impact on that. So we revised the route. We've added a pretty significant buffer, just annual buffer. We planted corn. And then we're working to address some concerns in terms of noise issues, and I think neighbors have been very responsive, very comfortable with. And we basically said all along, look, if you have concerns, all you have to do is pick up the phone and call, and let's have a conversation and see if we can work through that. And so far, we've really welcomed and enjoyed the dialogue with anyone who's responded. So since our last time we were here, we've refined and further defined the site plans. You've seen that on the materials we've got. In May of 2018, we appeared again before the town board to request a grade and fill permit to begin work on our 175-space gravel parking area on Sweets Corners Road, really to accommodate our existing customers. You pick apple season and sunflower season kicks off third week of August, and so we were seeking permission to go ahead and get started on that, which they authorized a grade and fill permit, and it was issued shortly after, and we've got work underway on that, work underway on that now with the intent of hopefully, not hopefully, having it done before our significant you-pick season kicks off. We've addressed the PRC, our feedback from the PRC, Monroe County also that we got just last week. The one thing I'll just mention, there was a bullet on the Monroe County Planning Board feedback about food service and making sure we were in contact with Monroe County Health Department. And we actually fall under New York State Department of Agriculture for our food service licensing. So that's where our regulatory body is, and so we have and will continue to work with them on that. I met this week with a fire marshal to address any potential concerns, and really, the only thing, the only change that really needs to come out of that is we'll need to locate a fire hydrant on the parcel to provide protection for some of the buildings that are a little bit farther away than 400 feet from the hydrant that we have. The other thing that may have changed on our site plan, we've really further defined that, and I'll just talk about the construction timeline, and then I got to flip over to Brennan to answer any technical questions. What we envision, and this is in some part dependent on how applicant one moves forward on this, but what we envision is parking area immediately and then construction of our main building, which is shown over there, and our events or birthday barn. Those would be essentially immediate. And then we show on the plan two potential further buildings. We don't have a timeline on that, and honestly, that's something we wanted to try and, you know, from a planning perspective and really our infrastructure, we wanted to think out what might happen in the future. But again, we don't have any timeline on that, and it'll really be dependent on whether there's demonstrated need for it or not. So what did I forget? It's on to you, Brennan.
Good evening. Brennan Marks, the Marks Engineering, 42 Beaman Street, Canadago, New York. So I'll get a little bit more detail and do a little more detail on the site, but we're requesting final site plan review or final site plan approval for the site. We have over 100 acres between three different parcels. There's 1303, 1315, and 1689 Dublin. The use is mixed-use on 1303, and then we've got the ag uses on 1315 in Dublin. We've reviewed the feedback you've provided to us from the PRC comments and also Monroe County planning. We'll go into detail about how we've addressed them. We've talked with Zach a couple times on the phone, and it's just minor plan revisions, pretty technical in nature. A little more about the site, we're proposing four buildings. There's a 7,000-square-foot building and roughly 3,000-square-foot buildings. As far as the site goes, the utilities, we're proposing, you guys actually have heard this before, but we're proposing to hook up to the sanitary at Edenfield Court, which is a subdivision to the south, with a sanitary lateral coming out of a force, or a pump station and force main up. We'll be collecting all of the sanitary at one main point on the site, which is close to, sorry, the western side of the site, close to a concession building here. Also, we'll be pulling water off of the street. Like Bill said, we need, required to add a hydrant from the fire marshal's comments. Hydrant be located somewhere within the middle of these three buildings on 1303. We'll be also pulling electric and gas off of Sweets Corners Road. Also, we're providing a storm sewer system that will be collecting from all around the site and conveying storm water to. A new stormwater pond will be located on the west corner on Sweets Corners. There'll also be a grass well at the border between 1303 and 1315, which will treat the water before it discharges to the roadside ditch. As far as, oh, there was a comment from Monroe County Planning about a federal wetland on the western neighboring property. We are not infringing on that federal wetland. Our construction activities are limited to the agricultural fields. We are not going to disturb the hedgerows or any of that wetland property. So the need for delineation of that wetland, I think, is minimal because we're in agricultural fields. There's no wetland species there, so it's definitely not a wetland. I guess with that, that's all I have for the quick bullet points on that.
Okay. Jim, you want to start off?
Yeah. We think that you've addressed everything quite well. The one question that I have is with respect to the farmstead area. So we asked you to take another look at it and just want to make sure that what you've settled on is what you think is appropriate for your use. We're going to make a recommendation to the town board to...
Yeah, we're comfortable with the farmstead area is. You know, we've covered all of the area we think we need at this time, for sure, Jim. The easement does allow for revisions to that in the future. I don't foresee any short-term revisions to it, certainly at least on this side of the street. I've talked to Zach a little bit. At some point, it may make sense to move some more of our traditional ag operation, especially our farm shop, onto the north side of the road, which might call for a small revision in the farmstead for that, but at present...
In which case, we'd get together again?
Exactly, yeah, yeah, yeah. So yes, we have looked at it, and we did revise the farmstead based on comments to pull it back off of that buffer on the southern end, which is fine. Yep.
That's the only question I have.
All right.
Anybody else have any questions from the board?
No.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I'd like to open it up to the audience and Mr. Gallagher.
Kevin Gallagher, 1973 Dublin Road. I am opposed to the plan by Wickham Farms. The first issue is traffic. From what I understand, there will be hundreds of cars coming to pick up vegetables. A high volume of traffic is detrimental to this neighborhood for several reasons, but I'm going to focus on safety. The root of the problem appears to be the business model. At this time, I'm going to ask Wickham Farms to change from existing pickup scheme to a delivery scheme to remove hundreds of motor vehicles from our roads. Wickham Farms has already benefited from substantial public investment and cost through the installation of a controlled intersection and dedicated turn lane. It is not appropriate for Wickham Farms to move for their convenience and force the community to follow with them with remedies. Traffic volume is an issue that can be addressed and mitigated right now, and it would be irresponsible not to reduce the safety risk. In my opinion, I believe the parking lots are intended to service activities other than the parcels being used. Let me correct that. In my opinion, I believe that the parking lots they propose are intended to service activities occurring on other parcels being used by Wickham Farms. For size comparison, general farm markets near Old Penfield Road has about 20 parking spaces, and Aldi's Grocery has about 67 parking spaces. Their proposal includes 175 parking spaces. It's much larger. The Conservation Easement and the Open Space Plan is not an open parking space plan. Parking lots are development, which is expressly prohibited. The plan violates the Conservation Easement in several ways, but I'm only going to touch on a few. First, the area is defined and protected as farm area, and only farm activities may take place on the land. That means things like fruit canons, corn mays, and even temporary parking are forbidden. The term farm market is being used, but without the specific limitations within the Conservation Easement for a farm market, those restrictions are being ignored. And I'm wondering, what is a farm market, and is this building proposal actually a farm market? There is no legal way to convert the farm area into a farmstead except to create a winery, which is not happening. Wickham Farms already has a working farmstead. The parking and farm market must be moved off of the Conservation Easement, but there are still restrictions. The location of buildings and parking lots cannot damage aspects of the Conservation Easement such as scenic views and vistas of the Conservation Easement. That means that any farm development, that means that any farm development either cannot be visible or needs to be seemingly shielded from view. A temporary parking area in a field might work because it looks like a harvested field, except for the sea of cars that are parked. You need to look at the non-Conervation Easement properties for this plan. If you have not read Conservation Easement, now would be a good time. While the town board may have dumped this in your lap, you, the planning board, the planning department, every town official and employee are required to protect the Con- conservation easement, abide by the open space plan and comprehensive, comprehensive plan and the associated laws.
Thank you. Okay, would anyone else from the audience like to comment on this application? Okay. Anyone else from the board have any further comments?
Okay.
Nope? Any closing statements or comments that you'd like to share? All right. Thank you for coming, and a nice presentation. We'll call this hearing closed. Have a great evening, everyone.
Okay, we'll reconvene, and since we have one of our applicants here in the audience, why don't we get started with, we'll go in backward order, if that sounds...
So, good...
Find you guys?
Sure.
All right. So, let's start with Wickham Farms.
So, I think we have to make a request that staff notifies the town board that we are satisfied with the area depicted on the applicant's plan for the farmstead area that they've chosen, consistent with the comments that we made after their sketch plan hearing.
Yeah, that's a great one to start with, yeah. As, as we had to do with other projects involving this easement, a, a letter to the town board from the planning board regarding the farmstead area boundaries, acknowledging your support and, and recognition of that area, and how the applicants worked to make that area smaller since the sketch plan review, we'll be, we can prepare that. It would take a vote this evening, if you'd like us to, to draft that and issue it based on tonight's presentation from the board. Sounds like everyone's on board for that, so...
I'd like to make a motion to do just that. Okay, second?
Okay. You have a motion, Burton and Bastian?
Hetske?
Aye.
Bastian?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Knower?
Aye.
Tities?
Aye.
With respect to the preliminary, the application for preliminary final site plan, I think the applicant has done everything that we've asked them to do, I think they have a very nice project, I think it's good for the community, I think it's, it's great to see a, a business that has, that has grown and benefited to all of our families all these years, to be able to consolidate and move into another site, and I would like to make a motion to approve...
Would you like us to begin drafting an approval resolution, or...
I thought you drafted approval resolution.
Not for this, no.
Not for mine.
Apologies.
I'm the state.
You want us to let the public hearing take place for this one? We could begin drafting an approval resolution for the site plan approval, based on everything tonight, the revised, we are expecting revised plans, as they stated, to address the PRC comments. Just want to confirm the board's good with the architecture as proposed, it's a very rural design, obviously, they're using a lot of barn techniques to, for the CSA barn, and similar for the events barn.
Very fitting for the, for the location and the use.
And, yep, as they stated, you know, this project involves three different zoning districts, with, as far as the mixed use, we've reviewed it, it complies with that, with the, they do have a couple residential components on the property now that they, that exist, that would, that would remain.
Is it okay, excuse me, is that, that's legal, as you stated?
Yes. Yep, we did review that. Obviously, this involves the Wilms Conserv, Conservation Easement, so they did go before the town board. I think I covered this during the sketch plan review, but I just want to get it on the record for this, too. January of this year, they received a letter from the town board that stated that the proposed uses within the farmstead area, as represented, does not violate the terms of the Wilms Conservation Easement, that's why we're here today discussing it as a site plan, a site plan review. That letter's on record, and was provided to the board as part of the reference materials, so that part has been discussed and vetted through. As you said, Jim, the last component of that with the town board does involve the agreement and discussion of the farmstead area boundaries, which comes after site plan review. So, with all that being said, um...
Does that address, uh, address Mr. Gallagher's concerns on?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So, with all that being said, between this meeting and next meeting, we'll prepare a draft approval resolution, the necessary secret form, as well as provide you with the updated site plans and responses to comments from the applicant, which we are expecting So we can prepare a tabling resolution with all those items documented in it for this evening, and just take a motion for that.
Motion to prepare a tabling resolution?
I'll second. All right.
Hetske?
Aye.
Bastian?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Knower?
Aye.
Tities?
Aye.
Okay.
Thanks, Bill, we'll be in touch.
Thanks, Bill.
All right, we want to move back in order and do our genie?
Sure.
All right. Yeah, we should be all set with that one. You do what you're told.
I'm just crying. Sit down here now.
We should be all set with that one, to address your lighting thing. I don't know if you can see that, because it's down a hill in the back, unless you want to put something in there just to make it, based on, you know, if you want some recommendations on light.
Just have something in there about the lighting to make sure that we're not getting a lot of, or really any additional glare off the site to the neighbor's property.
There is nobody close, I don't know how many acres they got there, I think...
Doesn't, doesn't matter.
There's nothing close.
Yeah, there's...
He said they've run the photometric.
Yeah.
So maybe just pending, pending receipt of that, and if it's acceptable.
Or it's conditioned or something.
Yeah, we can add a condition in the resolution, we do have a condition into the...
There's that A-frame right there.
Yep.
You can't even see that, all the landscape they got around there, and then it's, there's a hill, that, that structure, well, the lighting is way down a hill, it's all downhill in the back there, near the wetlands, I was out there today. Nobody sees anything.
But, yeah, we do have a condition in the draft approval template that discusses lighting and if a photometric plan is, is provided, and we can request one, as they said they would, town engineer can take a look at that.
Factors for consideration.
Yep.
Yep.
Definitely.
Okay.
Yep. All right. Yeah, I'm ready to make the motion.
So we have two things for you then, if you're moving to approve the project, you have the EAF first?
Yep, I'll make the motion to approve that.
Second?
Hetske?
Aye.
Bastian?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Knower?
Aye.
Tities?
Aye. I'll make the motion for the, approve the application.
I'll second.
Hetske?
Aye.
Bastian?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Knower?
Aye.
Tities?
Aye.
Okay, let's go. All right. Last but not least, Edenfield Square.
Did they show up, excuse me, did they go before the board last night?
Who's that?
Town board?
Yes.
For the...
They began discussions with the town board last night, the board session, regarding the dedication of Route AMB. As they said, they, the town board gave them some questions that they still need to answer, so they'll be back before the board when they have those answers.
Is there any, I don't know, what would be the benefit to the, the town or the residents?
Well, as, as Peter said, the goal of the mixed-use district is provide connections, not just within the district, but to other parts of the town. We envision this, you know, this southern anchor connecting up to areas like the town hall, Veterans Memorial Park, where there's obviously tons of recreational opportunities. Having a dedicated road through that, through this network, through this large district, it ensures that we have kind of a safe connection from point A to point B at the end. Typically, we see when it gets into a lot of people, a lot of different hands in the pot trying to maintain a road like that, it falls short a lot when it comes to long-term maintenance.
You look at behind Nap and Trial.
Yep.
You know, that, that's a mess.
So how is it compared to this?
Well, it's a dedicated road, it falls to us to the maintenance, so for plowing, paving, pothole repair, any striping, any...
Not just maintenance, but care and, and, you know...
You complain to the town instead of the...
How come we didn't do it before, when we approved the Y, I guess, is my question, how else do we do it?
Well, at the time, that was, really, just a road into the Y, it was a driveway.
It was a driveway, and we remember that the Y was much smaller at that time.
The only thing, Terry, that, that drove that was our comp plan, was the only tool we had that said, you know, there might be future development here, we don't know what it is yet, but the comp plan directed us to start the mixed-use project. Now that we have mixed use here, now that road serves a greater purpose, but...
And the town almost never approves dedication of a private road that serves a single building.
Right. And when we can, we, you know, if we can, to avoid issues with private roads, typically they're not built to the same standard, but because of the traffic and all the people that visit the Y, building the road to the town standards for a dedicated road just helps with the longevity of it, so it was a benefit both in the short term and, and the long term.
It's a public transportation.
It'll be interesting to see what the town board comes up with, I'm just wondering.
Right, right now, one of the key elements they're reviewing with the road is how many curb cuts to the YMCA's parking lot they're going to close off to help with traffic coming measures. That way you don't have 10 different access points from their parking lot going back into Road A. Now, I mean, we already have kind of an established use there with the Y, so people are very used to the traffic flow there, but one example is that the first curb cut as you're entering it would actually have to be removed and closed down, because they're going to shim the road up to decrease the, the slope, the steepness of the slope coming off the traffic light, so that it's safer to get in and out of the site, but to do that, when you shim it up, you're going to extend the driveway, and it's going to make that first curb cut in no longer accessible. So, you're already knocking one down off the list, and they're looking at other locations where they can close them off and still have...
Enough spots.
Enough spots, and that neutral result in the number of parking spaces for the...
Will they do that before the traffic study's complete, or wait?
The town board?
Yeah.
Um...
I think they're waiting for the...
It's simultaneous.
Yeah.
Because, yeah, I mean, to me, it might have a lot to do with it, you know, the traffic study, so...
At the same time, they're going to need to put some, some pathways through for, for bicycle and pedestrian traffic, you know, one of the things that we were talking about here with respect to the uses, those kind of undefined uses, if, if they're going to target, hopefully, the, the people that are members of the Y that frequent the Y, and those people become patrons of some of the businesses, if they can walk over there, it's going to take a, a lot of burden off of this, because, you know, what they're talking about here is 70 parking spaces for all the non-retail, that includes employees, so you get any kind of a business that, that's, that sustains good growth, you're going to have trouble here. Now, they could enter into, you know, an agreement with the Y to use parking at periods of time...
There's not a lot of parking there.
No, no, no.
Yeah.
At times when the Y's...
During certain hours.
Certain hours when the Y's not open.
Oh, open, okay, yeah.
Or during those non-peak times.
Yeah, but otherwise, you know, I, I think, I think that needs to be kind of a component of what we're talking about.
Shared parking throughout all the mixed-use district, mixed-use district will be required, and the Y is part of the district, so they understand that, you know, their parking is going to be...
Not just, not just parking. Also the pedestrian access is likely accessible.
Of course, of course, yep. And this plan, you know, I mean, they've, they, they have a lot, they did talk about the pedestrian flow and connectivity in and around the site from 250 to the Y, to the pedestrians going through it, so I know they, they begun addressing it.
And that, that, that one cross access that they were talking about, are they going to make that a, a raised crossing?
Which one, I'm sorry?
Of on the north side?
That goes to...
Like, like here?
Oh, from them to the YMCA?
Yes, yes.
I'm not sure yet, that could be something...
That's something we potentially could...
Point of clarity.
I think that's something...
It's a good, it's also a speed...
It's a speed issue, and it, you know, visually, people see the different texture of color.
Agreed. No, that's a good, the only issue is the plows, of course, but...
Every resolution?
That's, yeah.
Oh, I mean, this is a project...
One thing that I'd like to kind of, I mean, it's Road A right now, but I think it should be called Fitzpatrick Boulevard.
I hope you're watching.
Just putting it out there.
I thought you were going to say Hetske Highway, but, uh...
No, I mean, he was pretty instrumental in making that Y successful, so, yeah.
But we can include that both in the tabling resolution as an item for clarity, as well as just something for staff to review, because if this does become a dedicated road, you know, I was going to say, this is, this is a learning process for both applicants, property owners, town staff as well. There's a lot of new elements that are going to be introduced in this in terms of maintenance and, and how we address things, so whether it's raised crosswalk, or if it's, you know, painted in a way where it's, it's flush, but it's visible enough to deter someone from speeding down the road, we have to look at all the options.
So, so what are we being asked to do with this tonight?
Table.
Well, we got to come up with some, some items for a tabling resolution. I don't think that we can do an exhaustive list.
There's still too much information that's not really known here, I mean, I feel better about where they are now than I did when they came in with sketch. When they came in with sketch, it was clearly, you know, they were fishing, they were throwing some concepts out, I think they did a good job of taking feedback that they got from us and from the public, and, and I think they've done a, a better study of their own demographic and their own goals, but there's still a whole lot of questions here.
Well, those are, we need to come up with those questions.
I think there's...
Do we need to come up with all of them tonight? I don't think so.
No, I have just the high-level ones, in my opinion, for the board to consider, responses to the PRC memo, the receipt of the traffic study, which they said is forthcoming. I was hoping to touch on architecture tonight, it didn't really come up too much in there, they talked about what they influenced their architecture, but we have seen a couple revisions thus far, since we first got the application, when we gave it to you a few weeks ago, we do have some new elevations that are best shown on your handout, probably, obviously, we always get a little color wash here when we see it here, but there's a number, there's a number of elevations to consider. Now, at the same time, because there's a, a lot of information here, obviously, the board needs soak time on it, and these came in...
Fairly recent.
Fairly recently, looks like this week, so...
And, and did you send these to us?
No, I did...
Some guidance from us.
That's where I was going, so what we did with our architectural consultant already is that they provided responses to his memo, so I only asked him to review their responses for consistency with his.
But now that we have some, some more detail here, I'd, I'd be interested in seeing his, his take on, on the use of color here, I think the color is kind of muddy.
His memo, you probably read, when you saw his memo, he was asking for some enhanced materials as well, other things that may have tapped, tapped into, or other design elements that tap into some of the historical nature of Penfield itself. I know one thing that we've always been, as staff, trying to pound them on is the pedestrian bridge connecting the two buildings from independent living to assisted living, which is, thank you Doug for showing it here.
Assisted living to memory care.
No, this, this is independent.
Independent apartments, and these are the assisted living units, the memory care...
Memories, ground level.
Ground level, looks like.
There's no bridge connection there.
There's no bridge connection there.
I think it's actually the top of the...
I'm not super crazy about the independent living building.
They seem to be disconnected from the assisted and the memory care, they seem to be a different style of architecture.
Which I don't necessarily mind a different style of architecture, just, I'd like it to seem...
More cohesive.
To be more, almost look like more buildings than one massive.
You think four stories is too high?
No, I don't. I, I'm not.
We struggled with that on the committee, I remember.
I was never in favor of putting a maximum limit on that. And I know people will freak out at me about that, but I think things can be done appropriately at many different heights. Not to say that I'm encouraging them to do something more than four stories, I'm not, but.
Yeah.
It looks like a, a big apartment building or a hotel or something.
If you look at this drawing, look at the contrast between here and there.
And I don't necessarily mind the contrast. You know, I don't want it to all look like, you know, the pines of Paradenet or something. You know, just one, you know, barracks or something like that. I want there to be more interest, more visual interest. Does that make sense?
Completely. And if you look at the examples within the manual, sorry for me to chime in, but we spent a lot of time with this manual, both with the committee, our consultant, staff, in putting in some very good architectural references to inspire developers. And they showed them on the board.
I was at a place in Columbus, Ohio, a couple of weeks ago. Wasn't the same place.
No, okay.
This place is called.
I have my notes.
Can't remember what it's called. I'll look it up, but it was a mixed-use development that gave you the feeling like you were in a, in a village, even though the buildings were all kind of the same, it just didn't feel that way.
Do we need to.
Uh, yeah, maybe we, maybe we do. You know, it was an interesting concept and apparently they have a number of these around Ohio, around Columbus and.
Do you know who, the name of it, can you recall?
I will, I will find it out. I, I.
I wrote it down somewhere.
I can look, it was in Hilliard, I think.
Sounds very familiar.
I can find it quickly on my, I mean, I know exactly where it was.
I'm familiar with all the home leasing stuff downtown and Westgate. They're nice facilities, but I don't think, now this is going to be in comparison age-wise. I mean, that's people moving downtown.
Right.
And things of that, so, you know, I'm going to take a ride out to one of the nicest things in Armstrong, take a look at Episcopal Home, see if.
In Greece.
You know, maybe add it on, that'll blend in.
Yeah, I got, I, I want to look at it too because I, I used to work for the town in Greece and I did a lot of work in that park there. At school, they repurposed a lot of it and kind of did a little bit of a facelift on it. I, I can't put in my brain what was out there, what they added. But Google can tell us many things.
Yeah.
This is just.
Just give me the.
Long Beach, California.
I thought you were going to.
This is a mixed-use district in Long Beach, California. That is very nice with a central promenade.
Yep.
Pedestrian corridor, about four-story buildings with a mixture of restaurants and retail on the lower floors, office space on the second, and living space above, right in the middle of downtown Long Beach.
Then which is similar to Charlotte Street.
To your point, that's the settings.
Right.
But the architecture, the architecture.
Yeah, we, we need to make this.
Yeah, but that does look somewhat similar.
It does.
You mentioned Fairport, well, that's on the. On Fairport, yeah. Did they sell a lot of them? Yeah. Did they do a nice chat? Yeah. I don't know if they're all accurate.
One of the things that I meant to ask there, the landscape architect was if they had intended to plant mature trees or whether or not they expected that, that, you know.
Little girl was fast as Road B goes through the.
A thousand trees for four bucks.
That's X Road, Road B.
If we're going to have to wait for 15, 20 years for, for, you know, these shade trees to actually produce some shade.
Right.
And frame these walkways.
Right.
We'll have to double check the planting schedule on the landscape plan they provided.
Seven sixteen.
I mean, you can scroll through sizes.
I'd like to see ID, something a bit.
So you're right.
Well, you know what's interesting is, you know, you mentioned an IT guy.
Three option number one.
Yeah, I know my father-in-law. I mean, he would love to have an IT guy within walking distance, you know, hey, how do I use my printer?
They won't pay for it. Most of the older people.
Two to three.
That's a good point. That's a good point.
They may do it all the time.
Yeah, but if they were willing to make house calls. Right, so what else are those?
To your question, Jim, caliber if you're listed on the plant schedule?
Yeah, I, I was just looking at that.
Okay, so we can, we can discuss with Bruce a little more if you'd like.
Bruce? I think that's important because this is a very focal part of their presentation.
Yep.
Maybe get that fired up.
Next time.
They're going to enlarge.
Yeah, but how big are they going to make it?
Ed, we're still working on that.
Yeah.
Are you?
Yeah.
What's the discharge size?
We're, they're still developing all the numbers.
But that runs into the.
Yeah, I know, we're still reviewing how they're treating the water before it gets to the pond and how big it has to be, so I don't have the numbers.
Better to have a stormwater structure back behind the Y than to have it just on the other side of that roadway in this new mixed-use development.
We look at it as it's better to have one regional area rather than all these separate little ponds anyway, so we agree with their thoughts on providing it at the Y.
Okay, let's try to get back to our.
All right, so, so you've got some, some things to, to ask them to do and then I think we, we take these revised plans, get them back to Bruce and back to Chris, and rather than just say, review these and give us your comments, give them a little feedback on what we're discussing here tonight.
And that's what I would.
We're looking for some more cohesive architectural continuity between the different styles of buildings and the different types of buildings. We're looking for some colors that aren't so muddy is what I call it. It's just muddy.
I can use quotations.
It's a mud district.
Yes, it's mud.
It is the mud. I was waiting for that one.
Waiting for that. He's, he's up past his bedtime.
Now, I didn't see, other than on that handout that they gave us, do we have outbuilding?
Yes, they provided.
Yes, yes. There are renderings for the outbuildings as well. They're a little more conceptual.
On the last, last, second last page, there's a all.
And these look, these look like yet again another architectural style and, and color palette.
Those are, these are all just like, these are just the front.
Yeah, they are.
There are four-sided ones in the, in your files and Doug just put them up on the screen.
And the same thing with, with Bruce, you know, ask, ask Bruce to comment on, you know, what the anticipated height they're giving us caliper, so how big is a, you know, three and a half inch caliper pear tree, you know, and, and what's the spacing and, and, you know, when would they be expected to produce, you know, any amount of shade or?
Right. This is day one, right?
Yeah, yeah, 40-foot trees. I like, the best one was the presentation for the eyesights with the landscaping rendering that they gave us there. They big, 30-foot beautiful trees.
Maybe they transmuted once we cut down.
That's because they didn't want you to see the building.
Oh, yeah, why don't we declare or the intent to lead agency, lead agency, that's a good idea.
Yes, this is, as the act can state. This is in an ag district, therefore the size of the development triggers type one review. I would ask for two votes from the board tonight, one to type this a type one action and then two to begin the lead agency process and sending a letter to any interested and involved agencies with the board's intent to serve as the lead on this role, on this application. So vote one would be type one.
Motion.
I hear Jim and Terry.
Yes, I second that. Where's the burden?
Okay, Hetske?
Aye.
Bastian?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Knower?
Aye.
Tidings?
Aye.
And for the letter for lead agency?
So moved.
I hear.
I'll second.
I got a Knower and I got a Bastian. Isn't that coffee's big job?
Hetske?
Aye.
Bastian?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Knower?
Aye.
Tidings?
Aye.
And finally, a tabling resolution capturing everything we discussed tonight.
I have one more thing I want to hear.
We have not discussed everything tonight. Let's go.
We can do a tabling resolution and include everything that we're discussing.
Go for it.
No, but one thing I noticed when I was looking at through the plans is the main pedestrian spine down through the middle.
Yeah.
It's dark. There's no lights.
There's no lighting?
Well, we'll make sure that's changed.
So have them review the lighting plan to make sure the main pedestrian walkways are lit. If you look at the photometrics, there's nothing that spells over on it.
And I think we should capture for the residents, there really should be a dual charging station on that site. You know, they get into leads and all of that sort of stuff. We aren't even talking about that. You're talking about, you know, a $4,000, $5,000 piece of equipment installation. It's not trying to make the building leads.
Yeah, you're not going into certification or silver.
Because you get five, 10 years down the road, 25, 30% of the cars are going to have a plug on them and there's going to be more people going into those buildings every day.
They say that most of those, the, the, the grant program for that from the Genesee Regional Transportation Council is in my building, it's in my office, actually.
Oh, David.
Yep.
Yeah.
So, but they say that those statistics are largely hybrids. So hybrids run off 120 volts. So you can go in your garage.
But see, that's the point. Those people don't have garages. They're parking at a point where there's a sidewalk.
True, but they don't, they don't need a charging station, I guess is my point, so.
Well.
And I, I think it's a good idea to have a dual charging station. A single charging station makes no sense.
Yeah.
No, you need a.
The, the incremental cost to put a dual charging station in is probably nothing.
It's not. So I think one on site, I think would be.
And we have an I set to.
Well, I mean, you have one.
One for the residents and the other push is workplace charging too, wherever the employees are going to park.
Or if they have like a, yeah, if your employee has one.
Or at least the infrastructure ready to put it in.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
So I don't think, I don't think we want to ask a developer to, to spend that kind of money on the, on a tenant space that the employees might, you know.
Well, I, I like the, I definitely like the idea of the infrastructure being in place, you know, running additional conduit.
And it's, that's basically a conduit in an identified place on the site.
Yeah, so that it's not a major reconstruction to put it in later.
Yeah, between that or any alternative energy plans that they have, we can ask your clarification about that.
I think that's a good idea. All right.
Heard of that beamer already?
I'm going to go electric Tesla.
Moving on up. So again, with everything that was discussed here tonight, items for staff and our consultants and the applicant to follow up on and receive in the next four weeks before our August meeting, we'll include that in the tabling resolution. We'll begin the type one process that involves a 30-day response period, so we.
Effectively.
We could potentially, actually, our meeting's on August 9th, so I don't think we'll have the 30-day by then.
So we set down our, our lead agency.
Correct. And unless there's anything else, we could take a vote to table this tonight.
Jim? Okay. Somebody want to move it?
So moved. Second.
All right.
Okay.
Hetske?
Aye.
Bastian?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Knower?
Aye.
Tidings?
Aye.
All right. Do you have any further business?
Doug, you got any?
Do we have any other business?
No, sorry, we're not done with that. For tonight.